Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everybody. Now, welcome back to the Selectment Meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It is six fifty-seven P. M. We ran a little over from our previous meeting here about the grants. And if everybody, if anybody's recording, please let us know. We are recording via WCAT twelve, also via Zoom, and it's also being livestreamed on Facebook for everybody's information. If anybody else is recording the meeting, please let us know so we can let the public know about that. And can I have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Make sure I don't unplug the camera this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, they accidentally unplugged the camera when I moved my chair last meeting. So now I'm trying to avoid it as much as I can. Okay, welcome, everybody. First thing on the agenda, our updates and report from the Quabog Regional School District Superintendent, Mr. Stephen Duff. Welcome, sir. It's good to have you back.
It's good to be back.
So what do you have for us, sir?
Well, we have quite a few things tonight. First off.
Just, technicality, just if anybody's gonna speak, please identify who you are and your position with the town, or if you're a resident, your street address, just so we know, because it's a requirement for social media, and we have to make sure everybody does that, okay? So go ahead, sir.
I'm Steve Duff, Superintendent of Quabog Regional School District, resident of Warren. Would we have Beryl Wagner, who is our new Finance Director for the Quabog Regional School District? As you know, we have used, we have outsourced finance for the last year and a half with Total Management Solutions, and we're at a point now where we're transitioning with Beryl to be our Finance Director. She will be working hand in hand with one of the consultants that left TMS but knows the budget inside and out. And as we go into budget season, it's always good to have somebody that's been there for a little while. So she will be working with Kristen Jardine from TMS as well. So updates from the school, from the school district. First and foremost, I'd like to let the community know that we continue to partner with the community. The Tree Lighting Event that was hosted by Parks and Rec.
Can you just do us a favor and come up to the front chairs? Because on, on the camera, you're like
Because I'm so tall.
sitting in the back. Just so we can get your.
Sure. All right. Better?
Oh.
Yes. All right. So we continue to partner with the community. We did the Tree Lighting Event. We had students from Warren, Westbrookfield, and Quabog that did singing on gazebo. It was a great event. Parks and Rec always does a great job with inviting us to those events. We're currently participating in Light the Night with the Parks and Rec. We had sixth grade up at Quabog today. So in front of the Quabog Regional High School, you'll see different classes that have different decorations of, for the holidays, which I think is outstanding. This Saturday, the National Honor Society and Student Council is putting on Breakfast with Santa. There's been flyers that have been sent out to all community members. That'll run from seven-thirty to eleven o'clock. That's open to the public to come up. Santa will be there, and it'll be a great, great thing for the community. We try to do as much as we can with that. So those are the updates on the community-type things that we're doing. We're doing caroling over in Westbrookfield at Quabog on the Common and potentially Brookhaven. It's always good to spread a little holiday cheer to folks that don't necessarily always get out. So we'll be doing that next week, which is outstanding. Updates from the school, the Green Community Grant that we partnered with the town of Warren to do over at Warren Elementary. I can tell you that the heating controls are working very well in about ninety-eight percent of the rooms. We've been working very closely with Josh and Patrick Mahoney from Guardian to dial in a little bit on the rooms that are not quite where they need to be. Right now, we use plus or minus two degrees, and it's set at seventy, and the regulation has been working pretty well in most of the classrooms. The project is not a hundred percent complete. I spoke with Jim, I don't know if it was this week or last week, Jim, I can't remember. I apologize. They still have three unit vents to finish, but we have to break a hole in the ceiling still and build catwalks. And with the heating season coming on, we had a couple of things that were going on in the buildings that Mr. Estrella, the Facilities Director, wasn't able to get into the ceiling yet. That wasn't something that we had planned on happening from the beginning of this, but we know that some things come up. So it's just a question of whether, when we can free him up to get that done. So as soon as that's done, the state will come out and do their final inspection. Mr. Estrella has been in contact with the state throughout the process, so they know where we stand with that. IVAC grant, we are looking at Quabog, similar to what happened with Warren Elementary School. We applied for a three-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar grant, which we were awarded last year, but we couldn't do two buildings at the same time. We just finished the reapplication. We're still in the process, so we are looking forward to getting a grant for three-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars to change the pneumatic and vent systems at Quabog, which will help regulate the heat, because the system is pretty outdated. So we will be doing that as well. That project will take place this summer, and that is all grant-funded, which at the end of the day will save our costs on oil, which ultimately helps with our assessments towards our towns. So we should take a look for ways to offset the assessments by grant funding, kind of like Mr. Dumpty does.
Yeah.
Miss Smoller brought in two million dollars' worth of grants last year, and those grants helped to purchase equipment to provide after-school programming for kids, which is a much-needed necessity within our communities, which doesn't cost our families any money. So there's a lot of different things that the school district's doing to support.
People better remember with grants, if we don't get them, another community is gonna get them. It doesn't mean that, so when we go for them, people are like, well, that's taxpayers' money. Yes, but we want the taxpayers' money being used here in our town, because we need it. If we don't use it, some other town's gonna use it, so.
We recently have been working with Patrick Mahoney for a lighting upgrade at Quabog through National Grid. They're doing a hundred percent OBR, which is outstanding. For those who don't know, that's on-bill repayment, so it doesn't cost the town any money or the district any money. We're looking at doing roughly a two-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-dollar upgrade. We're gonna get about seventy-thousand dollars in incentives, and the rest will be off the monthly bill for five years. And then after that, we're gonna realize some really significant savings, once again, towards the assessments.
They're not already all LEDs for them?
They're not, no.
Really?
No. So we did more in Elementary School probably seven years ago, when I was principal there, but we don't have all LEDs at Quabog. So it'll be a huge savings further down the road. But once again, that's just another way that we're looking to offset some of the costs of things. We did do the generator. We spoke about this at our building, at our Budget Subcommittee Meeting. I think Rich, you were there, and Jim and Derek, you were there. The generator at Quabog, it was not working properly. And the issue with the generator is it is a shelter for the town, so it's a necessity that we get that up and running. I was, I reached out to Todd Smoller, because sometimes there's some opportunities out there, particularly if it's through BEMR or something like that, because it is a shelter to help offset the cost of that. The cost of that to repair was less than I thought. It was thirty-one hundred dollars. And I would ask at some point maybe to consider whether the town would help pay for some of that, because the purpose of it is to be able to open it as a shelter, and that's what we use to generate.
Do we have availability and funds to do something?
I think we, I think we could do something like that, yeah.
You know, so.
So I'll forward that on, and, you know, anything that we can do to help, obviously helps.
Yeah, it's our emergency shelter, so it's helping the community and the town, and you should have a generator. You know, we need to have it running, so.
So that was one of the projects that just was completed. From there, I wanted to provide the Board of Selectmen, I sent an email to Mr. Ferrera the other day. Our budget season will be opening very shortly. The hard part, the hard part with the school district budget, which I know that you all know, is that you don't get real numbers until you get real numbers. We're hoping to get preliminary numbers the third week in January, which will change between January and March, April, May. With the town meetings being in June this year, technically, we don't have to approve, the school committee doesn't have to approve the budget that gets moved forward to the town until April, but we think that that's way too late. So what we'll be doing.
Don't wait till last minute.
Oh, no, 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 no. And once again, I was pretty articulate with the email that I sent to Mr. Ferrera and Mr. San Angelo. Ms. Wagner and I will be meeting with the Building Principals, the Director of Technology, and the Facilities Director and the Special Education Director over the next few weeks. And then we're gonna start our budget meetings. Our first budget meeting will be on January eighth. And what we'll do is bring the Building Principals, the Facility Director, and the Director of Student Services in, and we'll go through all of our lineups with the Budget Subcommittee. We'll do that on the eighth of January and on the sixteenth of January, because it'll probably take a couple of meetings to get through that. Once we do that, on February fifth, Ms. Wagner and I will present to the Budget Subcommittee a draft budget for FY twenty-five. We'll go through that budget presentation with the Budget Subcommittee, and then we'll meet with the full school committee on February twelfth, at which time we will present our draft budget to the full school committee. We're gonna allow the school committee a month to digest the budget. It'll put us in where we have the budget finalized, March eighteenth. But I think putting the budget forward as soon as we possibly can to both towns and to the school board is really important. The school committee will have a month to review the budget and make any recommendations. The budget will then be, will be, yeah, the budget's based on necessities, not niceties. There's gonna be no fluff in the budget. We're only putting forward the budget that we need this year. From there, the school committee will vote on the proposed budget on March eighteenth, and shortly thereafter, the legislature will certify the budget as required by law and DESI, and we'll forward it to all the appropriate, all the appropriate boards within the towns.
Are you gonna let us know about the draft budgets? Can we get copies of the draft budget?
Yep. Well, it's, once again, and I open this invitation to you, I open the invitation to the entire public. Every meeting that the school committee has and the Budget and Building Subcommittee meetings have are all public meetings. And, you know, I would encourage that you do attend those meetings. The way that regional school districts work are different than a municipal budget, because we are regional, and that's why the school committee approves that budget and then forwards it, forwards it to the town. But those meetings have already been forwarded to Town Administrator Ferrera, and I had asked that they get forwarded to you as well.
Can we get copies of the school budgets as soon as you get them? Let us know the drafts and stuff?
Yep.
Just so we can have it.
The draft budget, yeah, I will absolutely go with that.
Just so we see what's going on and we know what you're working on. We understand it's not the final budget, but we can at least have a copy of it and say, okay, this is where they're going, or, oh, my God, they're going up to twelve million dollars above minimum contribution. God forbid that ever happens, but at least we have a heads up and we can know what's going on. Just keep us in the loop, so we can talk and keep the conversation. You've been doing an awesome job with that. The last meeting we had with you at the school, you broke things down, you talked to us about it, and we were able to understand. Keep that understanding going, and there should be no problems.
Right. And to be candid with you, the reason we're doing this on February twelfth is so that you can have the budget on February twelfth, and then if you have questions, and I am and Ms. Wagner are open to coming and presenting the budget at a Select Board meeting, if that's helpful for everybody. You know, we're trying to be as transparent as possible and get the numbers, but please know that the budget on February twelfth, those numbers can fluctuate. I'm not talking about the bottom-line budget number. I'm talking about the numbers that come in from the state, because we, we'll have a good guess at what it'll look like, but you just don't know until you know, once that cherry sheet comes out, and then we'll have an idea. We'll have.
We're, we're understanding.
Yeah.
Not our first rodeo.
Yeah, no. And so I just wanna be very clear and upfront about that. And we're gonna do everything we can to keep it as low as we possibly can. We know what some of our defined costs are and.
You're a taxpayer here, too.
Oh, I am.
And you know, we just worked really hard to get it down, and tax rate just went down again, so.
So we will be working very hard on the budget over the next couple of months, but I will get that to you on the day that, after the day that we present it to the school committee. I know Mr. Capetta comes to a lot of the meetings, so a lot of the information that we share at the meeting is already public information anyhow.
Now, you guys working on a capital improvement plan?
I have that for you as well. I do have a capital improvement plan. I can tell you what some of our items are on that. I can share it with you. I have a coffee. So we've been doing a.
How prepared. I didn't know I was gonna ask for that.
We've been doing a capital improvement plan for the last twelve years, and I'll be honest with you, we haven't had any capital improvement projects that have been completed by the town in the last twelve years. A lot of it, what we do is we figure out the grants, which to get things done. So this, I just did a couple priorities on it. So when we look at the capital improvement plan, like the heating recalibration was something that we've had on the plan for about ten years now, because it needed to get done. We'll be taking care of that with the IVAC grant, which we got from the state, so that comes off of the capital improvement plan. At Warren Community Elementary School, the driveway is in dire need of being repaired. The entire area, there's, once the spring comes, it's gonna sink about two feet. That's what happens. We're on a, we're on a swamp. Both schools are basically built on swamps, both Quabog and Warren Community Elementary School. So when it frosts keeps, it sinks, and that's a problem, particularly at Warren Community Elementary School. I didn't put, I have to get a quote on that. What I, I think I spoke with Jim about is the issue that we've run into is when you ask companies to come out every year to provide a quote, and you never give them business, it's difficult to get those companies to come back out, because we've been asking for quotes year after year after year. If there's a project that the, that the towns are seriously considering taking on, then I'm comfortable calling a vendor to come out and get a very specific number. But the driveway is one area that I think that we need to address at Warren Community Elementary School. The other piece that we need to address is the sidewalks. We're able to do three-quarters of the sidewalks. The sidewalks are actually twelve inches, it was twelve-inch concrete that was in it. We thought that it would be six to eight inches. So what we had budgeted to have the entire piece done, we couldn't get it all done, because there was just so much concrete and so much removal. So we have about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars worth.
Concrete?
Yeah.
Or sidewalk?
Per, per pad, when they originally built the building.
Wow.
Yeah. So you can imagine how much work it was to get that out.
Over-engineered a little bit? Twelve inches?
Depends what kind of concrete they used.
Yeah. So one of the projects that we're looking at, I would say that the highest priority for Warren Community Elementary School is the driveway. The second highest priority is the sidewalks. And to finish the sidewalk, it'd be roughly forty thousand dollars.
So that's why you numbered them on the side?
One inch, yeah. I mean, there's other things that are on there, but those are things that, I, I just wanted to give a top one and a top two. We could list a million things that we need for capital improvements, but we wanna take care of the highest priorities first. If you turn the page to Quabog, this is for the Middle High School, for the Middle High School. If you look at, like, they're reading, I'm sorry, this is the recalibration. That's the one that the IVAC will take care of. We are gonna need roof and boilers at Quabog High School. We have been doing a great job of patching the roof. We are trying to get to the MSBA goalpost. They always move that out. And what the MSBA does is it's, like we did the doors and windows at Warren Community Elementary School, MSBA paid for seventy-eight percent of that. The town had, or the town and the school just had to pick up the other twenty-two percent. They do that with roofs and boilers as well. We did boilers about seven years ago at Warren Community Elementary School. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project that we're able to cover with the MSBA. I'm hoping to get, last year, the goalpost was, supposed to be twenty years, and they kicked it out to twenty-five years. We have two more years to get there with our boilers. We have one more year to get there with our roof. If we can get to the MSBA project with the roof, the roof is gonna be an expensive project, as you can imagine.
How old's the roof now?
It's, except for the left-hand section.
Original?
It's original. So, I mean, I'm, I could say that it could be a million or two million dollars to do it. I can't, I can't tell you for sure, but if we get to the MSBA, it's gonna be up there, right? So we're trying to get to that MSBA number, so that they hopefully will pick up seventy-five to eighty percent of that cost, and then it'll defer the amount that we have to pay as a town to do that. But we are gonna have to address that sooner or later. The boilers are the same situation. The boilers are old. Our goal is to move from oil to natural gas. The line does run through there, but we do have oil, oil burners now. There is an incentive through Nat, through National Grid, but you have to be on gas right now in order to do that. We're doing that incentive with Westbrookfield Elementary School, because they are on gas, and Warren are on oil. So.
They're kinda pushing away from oil, and a lot of the grants and stuff is not pushing away from oil. They want you on gas or some sort of renewable energy.
Yep. So the pneumatic system that we'll do this summer with the IVAC grant, we'll be able, we're gonna plan for it to be able to work in conjunction with gas versus oil. So that's something that we're being mindful for. Typically, we do the boilers before the IVAC, but we're doing it in the opposite direction, but we're working with the company to make sure that it is compatible to gas. And Mr. Estrella's doing a great job with that. So that, yep.
What's MSBA?
It's the Massachusetts School Business Association.
Building, building.
Building Association, yep. So what they do is they allot a certain amount of money to the state to use for projects for schools, particularly schools that are, would be considered outdated. So if you look at our roof or our boilers, or in Westbrookfield, it's doors and windows. We did those in Warren. You can apply to those grants, and typically, it's about twenty to twenty-five school districts that get them. We've been very lucky, because we've received a couple MSBA projects for, you know, the doors and windows for the boilers in Warren. So that's, you're gonna see some real cost savings with, you know, we won't realize it as much this year as we will next year, because we're in the heating season now, but we're gonna keep track on how much oil we use, obviously, at Warren Elementary School, which is super helpful.
See if it's a big savings.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that it probably will be. Initially, we were burning probably about a hundred and fifty gallons a day of oil, and right now, we're burning about a hundred gallons. And that could even go down more, because we're able to control it a lot, a lot better with every system. And there won't be the windows open on the second floor, because it gets so hot, because we couldn't control it in the past. You drive by and the windows.
Yeah, I've gone in some of those classrooms, and one's freezing, and you go down the hall, and it's like, oh, my God, sauna.
So it's nice now, you know, and I would encourage you to visit during the, oh, you've been there during dates. You know, they have everything right around seventy degrees, which is, which is.
Yeah, I was talking to the guys, the contractors working over there, and they're walking around with their computer, doing their evaluations, because everything's computerized now, right? And they just walk down the hallway with the computer and make their adjustments. So.
It's really neat. So we have that service for a year. With Guardian, they'll oversee it for a year. And then there's a VPN. We don't have a VPN on our server right now. That's controlled by Guardian and by Josh, even though we can control it as well. But we'll have to eventually buy the box to control the system, which will be another cost that we'll have to talk about, not for this fiscal year, but for FY twenty-six. So that's, that's up and coming. At Quabog, our number one priority, we did patch the stairs in the front, but once again, that's just patchwork. The stairs in the front, the stairs around the entire building, and then if you're familiar with the back soccer field, there's stairs that go down in those, that back soccer field. I can tell you that those stairs appear to be very good. However, I can tell you that we have some significant issues with those stairs.
They're rocky, don't they?
Well, underneath, it's a huge cavity underneath it, because the water goes under, and it washes all the sand away. So if you ever walk to the bottom of the stairs, you can see, you know, six inches of sand that we clean out all the time. Everything is washing out from underneath those stairs. So at some point, we will have to address that. Where, rough estimate is a hundred twenty-five thousand, but I would need to get a quote on that to do all the stairs in the back stairwell. But I would say doing the front stairs and the back stairs is a priority. I wouldn't say necessarily right now that the soccer field is, but that at some point would have to get addressed. So the stairs is a safety issue. The second issue we have is with the auditorium and with the seats in the auditorium and the lighting. I think that you know about the lighting issues that we have there. The, the lighting initiative that we're looking at through National Grid doesn't touch auditoriums. Those are one areas that they won't touch, which is problematic for us.
Probably your biggest light right there is.
Yeah, well, it's not as used as much as hallways and classrooms, so they won't touch that, but I am working on getting a quote from a couple of vendors that do auditorium lighting. As you know, the lighting isn't terrific. When we go to the town meeting, we do everything we can, but those, they don't accept LED lights. The ballast don't, so you have to change those ballasts out, and the auditorium seating is original. So at some point, there are chairs that, you can't replace them anymore, because they don't make the same chairs anymore.
Historical.
Historical.
They're vintage.
So that would be our second priority, and our third priority would be the gym lockers, the lockers in the locker rooms. They need to be replaced. We do everything we can to maintain them, but those would be our top three priorities at Quabog.
Do, do the auditorium chairs and lights need to be done together? I mean, would it be good to maybe break those out to, because one might be more affordable than the other?
Yeah, so to do, well, and the tricky part about it is, you're gonna lighting, you have to remove the chairs.
Yeah. So you might as well just replace it.
Get the scaffolding up and stuff.
Yeah, because they're on panels, so I didn't know this, and I ended up changing a couple of light bulbs myself to try to get it as light as we can. But you get up on top, and the panels move.
That must be fun.
Well, I thought the ladder was moving. I was like, can somebody foot the ladder? But it was the panel moving. But you, you have to remove the seats to do the panels. So, I mean, yeah, we could, I mean, hypothetically, we could do it and break it into pieces. And, you know, once I get, like I, like I said, if this is a project that we're serious, like, we're serious about doing with the town, then I'm more than happy to have people come out and give us quotes. It's just that people don't like coming out year after year after year, and nothing really happens. And that's not, not to say it's just how life happens, but we are, I'm more than happy to get quotes on anything that the town is interested in us doing. I think the auditorium and the seating has a vested interest with the town and with the school, because we do use the auditorium.
So you're looking at fifty thousand dollars for that?
That, that's my, I'm gonna say that is my.
Is that your guess?
Well, it's with Mark and with the Director of Music, the theater person. They did have some people come out and look at it, but I will, I'm gonna break it into electrical, and I'm gonna break it into seating. We're thinking thirty thousand for the seating, probably twenty for the electrical.
Thirty for a seat, okay.
You'd probably blow on that.
I might be. Yep. So I'll get a real number for that one for you guys, because I absolutely love.
Yeah, and they're gonna have, they're absolutely gonna have to remove all the chairs from there, because they're gonna wanna get scissor lifts in there. They get up there, they're not gonna work off the ladders.
No, but we can, you know, once again, we'll do the removal of the chairs, and we'll do everything we can to offset the cost of it. You know, that labor of removing chairs is something that summer help could do. It would probably be a summer project anyhow, kind of like the IVAC program.
Have you discussed any of this with Westbrookfield yet, or they?
Nope. You are the first.
I was gonna say, are they looking, you know, they interested in helping out?
They, well, the way that the regional agreement is written, they would have to help out with the Quabog projects.
Yeah, okay. I was, I was gonna ask that, too. So we're responsible for Warren Community.
They're responsible for Westbrookfield, and then together, we're responsible for Quabog. So there are other needs, but, once again, I just wanted to prioritize it for you. I mean, and the other needs are the other needs. We'll look for grants like we always do to help with Chromebooks and with our E-rate and things like that. We do have additional costs coming up for technology. Things are moving to the cloud that is gonna cost us another eighteen thousand dollars next year. These are some of those unfunded mandates that, you know, we talk about all the time, that we have no choice but to incur. Unfortunately, in education, there are unfunded mandates that always come at us, and it's unfortunate, but it's a mandate.
So the, the lockers.
Yep.
And what's wrong with the lockers?
Well, they're original to the school, and.
Vintage.
They're, they're beat up a little bit, to be honest with you. There's wear and tear, as you can imagine with lockers. It would be nice to redo those.
They're not getting dangerous or anything, like, kids not getting hurt on the lockers?
No, we've covered, like, there was a locker that was missing that we've covered with, you know, we've covered with plywood, so that it's not dangerous. But once again, we take a lot of pride, as you can probably imagine. I think that when you look at the building, we take very good care of what we have, and, you know, it represents our community, our school, so it's important to us that all aspects of our, of our school represent us in a positive manner.
Are those lockers, I would say, easy to replace? In other words, you don't have to change the structure around it, right?
No, they're just stacked. They bolt together.
Yes. No, they're easy. You remove them and you put new ones in.
Put new ones in, okay. Yeah, all right. So that's encouraging.
It is. It's not, I mean, it's work, but.
Yeah, but it's not like you have to redo.
No, you don't have to redo anything. It all stays the way that it is, and it retrofits in. So. And once again, I'll be presenting the Quabog, the Quabog Capital Improvement Plan and the Westbrookfield Capital Improvement Plan to the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Council in Council in Westbrook Field, so that everybody gets the same information.
Okay, okay.
And then, did you have anything else?
No, just, once again, just, we're gonna be as efficient as we can be with the budget and get it into your hands as quickly as possible. And, you know, obviously, we're open to conversation. I can tell you and I can assure you that the budget we put forward is probably as close to the best budget as we, there's not gonna be any niceties in it. I understand, both as a taxpayer and as the superintendent of the school, we have a, we have a responsibility to put forward the best budget that we can. So if there are questions that we have between February and March, I would say that that month, the reason we're giving you the month is so that we can have those conversations, and then once the school committee approves the budget, they approve the budget. You know, and if we can have the conversations within that month, we'd like to know what we're going into in March. The hard part, and we talked a little bit about this last year, is with both meetings being in June, it's great because we'll have definite numbers from the, from the state. The hard part about the meetings being in June is if the budget wasn't to pass and we went to a one-twelve budget, we have one day to do the appropriate layoffs, which is, it's.
And we moved, we moved it to town meetings so you can get those numbers, because we did it to help the school.
Yep, well, right. And once again, we're trying to provide you a budget in February to help the towns. You know, and I think working hand in hand to come to a reasonable solution is the best thing that we can do for our kids and for our communities.
I think you're the perfect man to do it, you know?
We work together.
Although it's a lot of work for you, I can see it.
That's why we do it.
Wait, you're doing very good. You're doing good with it. Just keep us in the loop and be transparent. And as long as we can work together and talk and we understand, should be issues. It's when we don't understand, we get thrown answers like, well, that's what it is, and that's it. That doesn't help us understand, you know? We just wanna work together and be able to understand why we're paying so much money for certain things, so.
And we'll have a month to discuss that, so we'll be in good shape.
You're doing a great job with it so far. So we're on a good start, and I'm very hopeful with this because we are on a good start, and I think you're the right man to, to be doing this. And, you know, woman, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
You know, but, you know, you know it's gonna get contentious at times because we're gonna have questions, but it's only because we, we wanna understand. And as long as you can, you have the answer, you came in here prepared. You didn't even know we were gonna ask you for capital plan, planning stuff, because you just brought it right on us. Awesome. You're ahead of the game. Good job. So keep up the good work on that. Did you have any questions?
No, no, just, I look forward to working with both of you. So, did you have any questions?
Just a comment. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but today we were very lucky to have one, six of the best men in town, including fire, police, highway, Chris Dunphy, James, Ferreira, and the best, Steve Duff. The best people in town are here tonight. I'm very grateful for you guys.
Making the, making the town run.
You make a difference. You know, one of the things that, when Steve was going from principal to superintendent, I asked him, are you still gonna be stopping the traffic in the morning with the kids? He still does it. Every morning, he's there.
Good break from seven to seven.
Well, I appreciate it. My kids appreciate it.
He's still very active in the schools. Good job.
The last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank Chief Mallett, Chief LeBois, and Jeremy as well for his work the other day to get the roads ready for the snow. But Jerry and the Police Department and Adam spend an extraordinary amount of time at the schools helping us out. You know, populations have shifted a little bit. Things have become so difficult in some areas, and we work together incredibly well in our communities, and our kids are fortunate to have them as well. Absolutely. So, thank you, guys.
Hey, you guys, you still working on your more promotional support dog, you?
I'm trying for that, yes.
So, I know people are looking forward to that because people's ears perked up when you said that, and people are looking forward to it, and I think it'd be a great asset.
I think it'd bring my blood pressure down.
You know, the work with the schools, with the dog, too. So that would be great to have.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was wrong. Not six, seven.
I was gonna say, I was gonna point to this one here.
I, I don't see him.
Hardest working man in the town.
Yes, indeed.
Mister everything, every job, you know? And still looking for more jobs.
I'm sorry, I was wrong. They're not six, they're seven.
And he's getting his girlfriend involved in everything now, too, so. So, now that you know who we are, let's get to know who you are.
So my name's Beryl Wagner. I'm originally from Huffington, Mass. I spent most of my life out in Colorado, and I moved back here about four years ago, and I worked for the town of Huffington. I was their procurement and grants manager. We moved back because my husband and I had the first grandbaby of the family, so absolutely no pressure to move home. Out in Colorado, I was the public works coordinator for the city of Stevie Springs, which is really amazing. And making that switch from municipal to education has been really neat, and I landed with such a wonderful team. So I'm really excited to, to get involved and see this process through. I'm excited to work with all of you.
We look forward to it, too, and welcome to the team. Welcome to our town.
Thank you.
You know, we appreciate the help you're giving.
It's interesting, and I love it.
It's a small town, but it's a good town, and we're very friendly here. You know, people take care of each other. You talk with the chiefs anytime you need anything. They're always around, and, you know, Mr. Duff, I, I don't know how he does it, but I don't know if you've caught on, but he knows every single kid's name in the school, and it's like, so impressive, you know? And, and every, every one of those kids praises him, you know? And he's the guy supposed to be issuing out discipline and stuff and be like, I'm a tough guy, but every one of them absolutely loves him. My daughter, like, you know, loves him. And, you know, was talking highly because you helped out my daughter. Thank you very much. She, she was not feeling well, and he helped her get down the hallway, and she, he's so nice, and I love him, and, like, oh, but that's nice to hear. And it's good to have people so dedicated and so caring in our community, and we really appreciate that. And thank you for that. Did you have anything?
No, I don't.
No, sir.
Sir.
Mr. Ferreira?
No, I, I look forward to working with Steve and Beryl now on your new position moving forward.
It's gonna be hard work, but.
I wanna say everything that I've done so far, I love it. I love the differences between education and municipal. I love accounting, as kind of weird as that sounds, to see me in front of.
I'm not a numbers person.
It's just, it's really, it's really neat. And the kids are amazing, and the team is amazing. I'm so lucky to work with Steve and the principals and the administrative team. It's really, I feel like I've landed where I was supposed to be, you know, this whole time, so I'm really happy.
Good. Let's, let's keep you around for a long time. All right. Does anybody have any questions about the school? We're not that popular on Zoom, but you'll see it a lot, a lot on Facebook, and, you know, gets a lot of hits on YouTube, so. Oh, you'll be on YouTube, too, so. It is what it is. All right, nothing else? Good, good. Nobody has any questions for you, and you've been answering everything, and we really appreciate. Did you have something, Adam?
No.
No, okay. We really appreciate you coming, and let's work, continue to work together and make the town better and the school better, so.
It's a goal.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Have a good night.
All right. And then, next thing on the agenda is discussion with Whiskey Hill Liquors, twenty-three seventy Main Street, West Warren, about a recent warning issued by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Okay? How you doing tonight?
Tired.
Can you please come up front? So, we were notified by the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Com- Control Commission that there is an incident where somebody under twenty-one purchased alcohol from your establishment. We're not here to scrutinize you on that because that's already been done by the state, and they issued out a warrant to you. So our concern is, at this point, we just wanna know what you've done to make sure it doesn't happen again in the community, because we issue the licenses, and we just wanna make sure that something like this doesn't happen. And I'm sure you don't want it to happen again either. So what are you doing, first of all, identify yourself before you start, but what are you doing to make sure it doesn't happen again?
I'm Joanne Lauren. I'm the owner of the store. I don't know if any of you have been to the store. If so, everybody that comes in now is thoroughly annoyed by my new policy that we card everyone. We've had people walk out, not come back. I've had complaints, especially some of the older customers, some of the regulars, those who already know us. It doesn't matter, we card everybody now. And the machine, the computer system, aside from, as it always says, it has the date of birth per, you know, everybody that should be of age. The computer system now reminds my employees after every transaction before they can cash it out, it asks if the customer has been ID. They have to check yes or no before they can move on.
Okay, very good. And yet, people will understand, it's.
Some of them do. I've covered a couple shifts over the last few weeks, and I'm actually impressed that some people come to the counter with their ID out. We have signs on the counter, we have signs on the door, but then you, like, you'd be surprised, there's the people that come in, and they're like, well, I don't have my ID, and I just kinda laugh because I'm like, how did you get here? You drove here. You should have your ID. I don't have my ID. It's at home. A lot of the older people, especially, I'm like, sorry, I don't know what to tell you, you know?
Just blame it on us. Everybody else.
Well, and I told my place owner to just explain it to them. Explain to them why we're doing it, you know? Because my theory is if my, if my place are carding everyone, they're not gonna forget, right? They're not gonna have a reason not to because they're just gonna have it.
And then you're not gonna say, boy, you looked old enough to me.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's what will get you in trouble because some of these people that they send in there, these kids, you know, they got full beards and stuff, and you would think.
Right.
Well, that kid's forty years old. No, he's nineteen. So, you know.
I just turned twenty.
See?
I would have.
I'd probably serve him, but I'd get in trouble because he's only twenty.
That's really hard when you have a sixteen-year-old.
He started young.
Twenty years being here.
Oh. But, you know, we, we brought in each of the establishments because you weren't the only one that grabbed. They, they went through the town and checked everybody, and out of the twelve establishments, four of them got grabbed. And, you know, we've talked to the other three last week, and they were basically in the hot, hot seat about that, too, and explained what they're doing, and there's been minor changes and improvements to software and policies and re-establishing the signs up there, letting people know. We're doing this because, you know, we wanna make sure our community is safe for everybody, and although, yes, they're old enough to serve in the military at eighteen years old, they're not old enough at twenty-one to drink. And sometimes, when they get to that point, they drink a little too much, and they get into trouble. So, you know, I've been there. I was young. You were young once, too, right?
Uh, sometime, yeah.
Probably got in a little trouble.
Maybe once.
Maybe once. Drinking in the woods type thing, you know? But, you know, we're just making sure to give our kids in our community the best, you know, they can have and best advantage, and we just don't want to see that happen in our community. And you guys are frontline people for that, to make sure it doesn't happen. And the last thing you wanna do is get caught again and end up losing your license, and that's your business, that you're levitating. You put everything into that, and you don't wanna lose your business because of something like that, you know? And we don't want you to lose your business. We want you to continue and grow within our community and be a good business. So that's why we're like, let's talk about this and make sure that this doesn't happen again. And keep in mind, one of the businesses identified that he's already been revisited several times, and people coming in and trying to purchase alcohol that are underage, and they've been grabbing them. So if the state grabs you, the odds are, they're probably gonna send more people in to do more checks to see if you are, in fact, improving and doing what you're supposed to. And beware, the town can also send people in and do spot checks, and, and then we'd have some concerns with the licensing at that point.
And that's actually, I've told my employees that, and I let them all know, I'm like, hey, I'm going to this meeting tonight because of what happened, and I'm like, you know, I'm like, the, the city or Boston might come back. I'm like, the town's right down the street. You guys gotta make sure you're carding everyone, so feel free. Let them know.
And it was, it was advised by this, by people there that, we do our own spot checks, too, so. And just beware, it might happen, might not. I'm not gonna tell you. But thank you very much for improving your, what you're doing.
Exactly.
And, yeah, you're gonna get some people that are a little upset, but in the long run, it saves your business.
Right.
Keeps you open for a long time.
Exactly.
And it prevents you from getting in trouble as an owner, because, you know, the people that work for you might not be the ones getting in trouble, but you sign your name on everything, so. So be aware of that. Did you have anything, sir?
I think you've covered everything. Thanks for coming in.
Of course.
Do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Now, Mr. Condrer, you had a question?
For the record, I have been carded, John. And I'm seventy-three.
I, I card him, too.
Yeah.
Because he just, he's Joe. We just have to card him anyways.
Just to make sure he's Joe.
Make sure he's still Joe.
Well, I don't know.
There's some images you just can't take back.
Next on the agenda.
Do you have anything for us?
I don't.
No? And thank you for being a member of the community, and continue to do a good job, and stay out of trouble with the state.
Try. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joanne, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
I thought you were looking at me.
Well, you're about to come up.
That's what I thought you were.
So next thing on the agenda is Police Chief Monthly Reports for the months of October and November.
I do. So I guess we'll start with October. And in October, we had two thousand one hundred ninety-five calls logged, eight felonies, sixty-seven incident reports, three on view arrests, three one arrests, twenty-five summons arrests, one protective custody, three juvenile arrests, one hundred and thirty-one motor vehicle stops, and forty-nine site teams. I actually forgot to put this one thing on. On the first, I attended the Jimmy Fund Walk in Boston. I've been doing it for four years now. This is the first time that I've been able to actually go out, because it's been remote. Been doing virtual walks. This is the first time that I've been able to actually go out to the Boston site. Our team, Team Police Chiefs, we raised a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We were the third-rate team for, for the walk. And it was, it was a cool experience. It starts at the end of Flubber, and it's a, it's a catwalk. It goes from building to building, and all the sick kids go up to the catwalk, and they have signs, and they wave, and, and we start the, the walk off. It was, I brought my daughter. She had a great time. It was a great experience. But I do that every day, every year. I'm gonna keep doing it.
Great job.
At the beginning of the month also, Adam, he was with me. We attended a presentation with the, our safety committee chair, Urban. He did a, a presentation with all of them. He did a, a presentation with all employees about safety on the schools and we were there to assist him. Eric did a great job, I don't think we had to do anything or say anything.
Nope, he covered everything. That was about it.
Yeah. Uh, on the fifth, Officer Bouchard and I went to the military state police barracks. This was a, uh, we haven't done a drug destruction in a while, so we had a lot of drugs that needed to be destroyed from cases and it's got to go through the DA's office. So, he, the DA, what's the DA's office does this destruction every now and then and it's, it's at the police barracks. There's a bunch of hoops you got to jump through to get, to get it destroyed and Officer Bouchard did a great job with that. On the tenth, the department received a clear night vision camera via a grant that we applied for, for the United States Deputy Sheriff's Association. That's, it's, it looks like a, um, single cam, mono camera?
Mono.
And you can see up to a hundred yards at night and it's infrared. So, you can be able to see people if there are no woods or anything. It's a nice little piece of equipment. On the tenth, I attended my monthly Homeland Security meeting. That one, we just discussed some funding for boating safety. It's something that fits our, in, big into another. We have a percentage of each year that has to go towards certain projects and again, I think it's three percent of the Homeland Security funding had to go to, towards boating security this year. So. Uh, till the fourteenth, the department took, uh, part in the trunk or treat and I'm glad to say yet again, we did beat the fire department. Officer Sujin headed that, he did a great job on our trunk. And on the twenty-sixth, I was able, along with the Cops for Kids Association, we do, we were able to present a check to the rumor family for five thousand dollars and to support needs for the kids cancer. And finally, on the thirty-first, Superintendent Daphne and I met with the kindergarten class to discuss an upcoming lockdown drill that we were having. And also on that day, I was able to attend the fire department's parade and costume contest. And Adam really does do a great job with that.
Where did you dress up as?
One year I dressed up as Adam.
Yes.
It was great because his guys helped me out, I stole all his stuff from the back of his cruiser. I put it on, I had a mustache and everything.
Took a picture of my wife.
Took a picture of his wife and a kid.
Did you have all the single ladies in town hitting on you too?
I had, I had to fight them off. Said I looked like George Clooney, I don't know.
Come to her bread back, yeah.
I have a picture.
It was pretty funny. You want to go to November?
Yes, sir. November?
For the month of November, we logged one thousand nine hundred fifty-seven calls of service, seven felonies investigated, fifty-one incident reports, seven on the arrest, two warrant arrests, twenty-two summoning arrests, total thirty-one, one protective custody, one hundred and forty-one motor vehicle stops with ninety-nine citations. If you notice, some of the mileage is like six-four to, you didn't have it actually. It usually takes about six months to turn around to get a new car. And they called me probably right at the end of November and they asked for the car right away because, um, we actually, to save money, we're taking the equipment out of the old car and putting it in the new car. And I think the reason that we moved to the front of the line is because a lot of it's waiting for the equipment to come over, from overseas. I know there's a backlog with lights and the cages and since we have it, I think they put us towards the front. So, we might be getting it, um, sooner than later. I was expecting six months from when we voted out at a town meeting, but they took, they called them. They called me on a Tuesday, they wanted the car on Wednesday. I drove it out there to them.
Absolutely.
So, I didn't have mileage for that. Obviously, I know it's over a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah. But it's no longer a problem?
It's not, no longer.
Yeah, exactly.
Nice new car coming.
Right. See, it's at the mileage where everything's going to start going wrong. Uh, on the first of November, we conducted the lockdown drills with the three Quayleau district schools. All schools did a great job within, the drill was very successful. Uh, I'd like to thank the members that were there from Warren PD, Warren Fire, Westbrook Field PD, Westbrook Field Fire and State Police C-Three Barracks who all helped us conduct this lockdown. On the seventh, I attended my monthly Homeland Security meeting. Well, we just discussed the current projects and the, where they, where they are at this time. On the eighth, we had our Safety Committee meeting for the school. Where we discussed, one of the things we discussed was the review of the lockdown drill that we had just conducted. We also, later on in the month, we, we all met again. Uh, we're discussing how to have better communication within the three schools with our radios. So, that's a, that's a topic we're, we're on now.
So, do they currently have radios to call into dispatch?
Well, I don't want to...
Um, no, okay. I'm just saying, because a lot of other communities are doing that, so they call directly from the school and notify dispatch that there's an incident or they need help.
Yeah, so, uh, well, I don't want to say anything, but we have, we have communication with them.
Okay, very good.
Sticking with the school, uh, this, on November, I attended two trainings that were involving school safety. Um, the first one was on the fourteenth, it was a school safety summit. They covered a lot of different topics such as bomb threats, um, all of that. There was an FBI guy that was there for, did, did one of the classes. He was very, very good. The second training was on the twenty-eighth and that was on the creation of school threat assessment teams, uh, which is something that we kind of already do with that, that, um, where we had the Homeland Security guy up there that went through all the schools, that was part of the assessment teams, which we're already ahead of a lot of school districts in, in the Commonwealth. On the ninth, I attended the quarterly Massachusetts Chief of Police Conference. There, we discussed a lot of legislation that's in, that the, the Mass Chiefs are trying to get passed. On the twenty-second, I was invited to the elementary school for the Thanksgiving parade, which is pretty funny. All the first graders marched around the school at the little, I call them parade floats that they, they made. They went all around the school and the older kids watched them. It was, it was a fun time. And then on the twenty-seventh, uh, with Parks and Recs, Chief Lloy, Jaren Nelson, the highway supervisor, we all met to discuss the upcoming tree lighting that Jimmy had pretty much all planned out before we even got there. Great job on that. So, that's my two months.
Very good. Good job. You know, things are getting busy.
Oh, yeah.
You know, keep up the good work on that and, you know, you've been doing a great job and it's great to see all our vehicles are now under a hundred thousand miles and they'll all be under...
The highest one now is sixty-three.
Sixty-three thousand.
Which is pretty good.
Yeah.
So, we won't need one at town meeting and, you know?
Good. Good job.
Well, we should put away a little money for that.
Yes.
Yeah, you were talking about...
Let's air for one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, started thinking about, you know, capital planning, what can we put ten grand away right now or twenty, you know?
Yeah.
For the car that's going to be coming up.
Yeah, at some point, it's going to be there.
Yeah.
So, it's not a big thing, they, we, you know, by the time you get, "Oh, I need fifty grand for a new cruiser." Well, you're planning, so you have, you got twenty grand here and not twenty...
Yeah.
You're good.
On, on the verge of that, there's towns that, you know how we, uh, National Grid might do a detail and they request a cruiser? We charge them for the use of that cruiser. It goes to the general fund, but a lot of towns, it goes to other cruiser purchasing line. Or, um, the LTCs, there's a fee that, um, the state takes most of the money and, but we get like ten percent of it, but it goes to the general fund instead of maybe an account like that for future purchases.
Because that's kind of gravy money, right?
Right. It's like a revolving account.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know how they would set that up specifically. I'd have to look into that, you know? Well, maybe at a town meeting, you just allocate that amount into...
Yeah.
You know, you fit, you keep the account of what it turned out for the year and then you just move that money. Yeah, if it can't be audited or something. Yeah. It's a good idea.
Well, I think Cemetery was trying something like that before and we couldn't do it. So, maybe if we could research that, we can do a revolving account for some of these fees to go back into the departments to pay.
I know the highway has something about when they snowplow for the schools, it goes into a special fund.
Because it's a good idea. If you're doing the details, the details are paying for the new cars, right?
Yeah.
So. It's a good job, it's a good job. Good thinking out of the box. Hey.
First time I think with the capital planning thing, so. Yeah, so, I surround.
Very good. Yeah, if we can research that, see if that's something we can do and how we can do that. Maybe it will. Okay, did you have anything else to?
Uh, no, those are the two months.
Do you have any questions?
I do not. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just want to say that, you know, it feels so good to feel safe with our first responders, including fire, search team and police. You know, I'm saying this as a, as a head of a, of a family, you know, how, how we see, how we feel safe in town with all of you guys. It's incredible. Thank you very much.
Without Jimmy's help on a tree lighting, I would have never been able to staff people on the roads and stop traffic. I wouldn't have had, I would have had to have every person we had there.
It's a team here. What I want to look at too? Staffing needs.
Yep.
Because you guys had a study, right?
Yeah.
You had a study and the study told you what you're supposed to have for staffing, right?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. It did.
It was there. I'm trying to remember, I reread the whole thing and I can't remember. Yeah, we did that and it was, I know one of the things was our violent crime is really high. I forget what it is, I know it's higher than the national average. So.
Which?
The other night, we were going, we didn't have enough cruisers for everyone that we were dealing with.
Call for call.
Yep.
Right after each other, you know? It's getting like that in every community, unfortunately. And between the break-ins and, you know, everything else going on, the violent crime, the, people just... You're not arresting me and I'm going to fight you.
Yep. Yeah, same.
And...
You tell them they're under arrest, they say no.
Yeah. You're going to go toe-to-toe with them. It's, it's a tough job. It's a dangerous job and I have a lot of respect for what you do.
Yeah. We, uh, I was telling you at the end of the evening, the other night, Officer Jay did a great job, motor vehicle stop, car from seventy-seven down Main Street. Pulled them over, and if something was wrong, pulled them all out and was able to retrieve a stolen firearm out of Springfield. We were able to get a gun off.
Good call.
That turned into five people being under arrest and only having three cars, so we had state, Westbrook Field.
Yep. And people got to realize, you're going twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and you only got eight guys.
Yep.
So, eight guys running a, a town, you know, seven days a week.
Which goes into the next thing.
Every day. So, it's, it's a lot, you know?
It takes toll on the guys too.
Because it's hard to, it's hard to, yeah. Like, somebody wants to take a day off or somebody gets it, and God forbid, somebody gets hurt or has to go up for whatever reason, maternity leave. And now everybody else has to pick up that slack for them. And the state's not helping by giving mandates where it stops, you know, from reserve intermittent officers or part-time. It just, those are gone. And the days where, "Well, why don't we get some volunteers to help the police department?" Okay, you can put in an application and when the town approves that position, because it's only budget-wise, it takes time. Everyone's got to go through a full-time academy now.
Yeah.
Six months. And that's, you, you got to do the hiring process, you got to find somebody, then you got to see when the academy's coming up. Then you got to get them into it. They're gone for six months, then they come out for training because...
FTO.
The thing with part-time was is you, you kind of train them as they, you give them time to train them. If you put them through, they came out, you already had them trained. Now, you got to FTO them for twelve weeks after that. So, it takes a year and a half, it's going to take a year and a half to get someone on the road.
So, it's over a year to get somebody on the road and it only takes them two weeks to quit with?
Yep. We seen that.
So, people keep in mind, when we ask for a police officer or firefighter in town, it's, it's not like the old days. The old days are done. That, that way of running towns is over with. It's never going to come back. It's not going to happen. Now, you need full-time professional people to do these jobs. You can't, you can't staff it with, you know, Rich and Derek saying, "All right, we'll just fill in some shifts for you." That's over with. You can't do that no more.
Forty years ago, you used to have a calling service and they'd call the guy at home sleeping.
Yeah.
"How's the mess going on?" "Okay."
Now, now it's, there's something always going on.
Yep.
You know, guys are working and it's just going to get busier. Unfortunately, it's the times, they're changing and society's changing, so. But keep up the good work, keep on fighting and we're here for you, you know, you and Adam. Anything you guys need, we're always here for you guys and we're going to always support you guys and Jimmy back there too. And, you know, you guys are here protecting the town twenty-four, seven, taking care of residents and we're here to make sure you can do that and protect you guys, so. And I think we all can safely say, "We have you back."
Thank you.
You're welcome. And now you have something else for us?
Now I have something else. Now, the staff of this.
So...
So, I have in front of you this...
Let me just... Um, the next thing, uh, thank you, Chief, for your monthly reports. Discussion on creating, nope, nope. Discussion on possibly, uh, adopting a special traffic constable policy for the town. Anticipated vote on this one. And Chief, there you go.
This is something a lot of towns are going to, we're, during my predicament. I used to have six, seven part-time guys to help fill shifts, details. I got one part-time guy fills the detail every now and then. This is something that a lot of towns are going to where, um, we'd start off with retired guys, um, fire department guys. We'd be, we'd start a traffic constable, help us with the road details. Nothing that would need police powers, it's the, the guys you see out directing traffic around.
Listen, Jesse, you got a highlighter? Sorry.
Did I spell something wrong? It's... Oh, yes. He usually gets my spelling.
You correct me?
This one.
Where is it?
We, we get a lot of days where they want six, seven officers.
Number three?
Oh. Oh, thanks, Adam. There is one thing too on the second page. Supposed to say warrant fire retired.
Okay.
Fire department personnel is full-time. I did this thing three times yesterday and each time I saved it, it didn't save it. So, this morning when I came in, I thought it was all saved and it wasn't. I had to redo it again. I did miss the, um, uh, number three under procedure there. It's supposed to say one, just warrant fire department personnel, not warrant full-time fire personnel. So, it's given opportunity, especially for Adam's guys, to go up there, direct some traffic for us, help us out and make some extra money on, on the side. Hopefully, they keep them here.
So, it's not supposed to say warrant? On which one? Number three?
Second page, number three.
Another three. There's four, five, six on the second page.
He's lucky to guess. Two, two pages of number.
That, that's, that's from the union. The first two pages are from the union.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
So, my original one, uh, Jim had sent out the town council and we also gave it to the union to, if they had any issues, the union came back to me with that. I added that in.
Okay.
And I added, I, everything that town council recommended, we put into it.
Identify that they're not sworn police officers and they have no powers of arrest. Correct. Do you have anything else on this, Chief?
Uh, no, I, I don't think you guys even got a chance to look this over.
Mr. Ferrari, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, so, the chief is, is a hundred percent correct. The first two pages are, are from the collective bargaining agreement, patrol... The first two pages are, are from the collective bargaining agreement Patrolman's Association, um, um, letter that they, you know, that we, 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 we requested from them for the purpose of them reviewing, um, this new policy. Because myself and town council felt that this could be viewed as, as a change in, in working conditions by the union and so we had asked, um, Adam, I mean, Chief Mallett to send this over to the Patrolman's Association for their review. They did make some comments here. This has been reviewed by town council and they had made comments on some suggestions that the chief, um, make some changes to it and I believe you went through those changes, right Chief?
Yep.
Okay. And so those were, those were updated. We realized that, um, this is the first night that, that the board has seen this. I believe the board is meeting next week, so I mean, if you wanted to, um, you, you could take this under advisement this week and possibly we could, you know, if it's okay to, um, you know, move forward, you know, next week if the board is comfortable.
So they're purchasing their own uniforms?
Mm-hmm.
And you have a prescribed uniform for them?
Mm-hmm.
And it's unarmed?
Yes.
Knowledge of the town of Warren, geography, streets and businesses is required. So what's, what's that about?
Just so they know the area.
So they gotta learn like all the streets and stuff or?
Gotta be familiar with.
Familiar with, yeah.
Directions and stuff.
They may not be rocking. No South Bridge Road and the main ones.
Yeah.
So when you go, hey, go to South Bridge Road over here, they're not.
Yeah.
So they can all use red or yellow lights?
No blue.
No blue.
Red is cause of Adam's guys have them.
Hmm. So just read the, uh, policy. I'm good. Yeah, no concerns. You good?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
I'm good.
Okay. Very. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have anything to answer?
Uh, I don't think so, no, I haven't, Jim.
And everything looks good, well put together, identifies everything, identifies the duties, training, uniform. So, I'm good. Do a motion.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve and adopt a special traffic constable policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Richard Harker, aye.
Derek Biddies, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes to you.
Thank you.
Traffic constables, Chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Okay, next thing on the agenda is emergency management director's report for the month of November. Sir, you're up.
Good evening. I'm Jim McKean, emergency manager at Warren. This is my November report. Uh, the fifth of November, we did the emergency sirens activated normal. At eighth of November was our monthly SERT, uh, training, which we focused on fair state CPR. We wrapped up that sector and the next meetings, we're gonna be going to more of the SERT unit, uh, search and rescue fire safety. Uh, November eleventh, we, um, assisted the Sturridge SERT and their police department with their, uh, five K road race they do annually, which goes from their common around a loop out by where Jay-Z Penny used to be and end up down by eighth, uh, Route eighty-four and comes back to the common. Uh, we watched a couple intersections for them, uh, two members helped there. November fourteenth, the Warren Water District had a water repair and then we deployed our light tower from four PM to nine to help them light up the scene. While they made the repairs. Then November twenty-first, met with Kevin from NEMA to start the twenty-three MPG grant. That's the emergency management grant we annually get. Uh, it's a worth of twenty-seven hundred dollars. This year I tried to, um, apply, get another storage container, the one out back. Basically very similar to that one, same size. It would be put right next to that and then back there to store more of our items that are, keep growing. And later that night, we got our first snowfall, first plowing, first salting.
You guys plowed that?
It, it came, yeah, certain, certain parts of town, uh, get into weather and stuff.
It was like a dusting.
At certain, certain areas, we did have to plow, uh, our all our main roads. And it melted away quicker too in areas too. Also with that grant that I just talked about, I got the, uh, contract back. So we need, uh, to get on a further agenda, maybe next week if we could, uh, get it signed off.
Okay.
So that's my report.
Can you just make sure that gets added to the agenda for the twenty-first?
Yeah, I'll get you the information that you need. Uh, next thing I just wanna get into is, uh, a little winter safety as we had our little first snowfall. I came across some information with a car safety, NEMA writes, these are what they have good in cars for winter, you know? Make sure you have your snow brush, winter tires, good tires is the best thing. Make sure you have good tires. Without the snow tires, you know, end up in accidents and stuck on the road and we have to come help you out. That's a good, good practice to, uh, check in the next couple of weeks or, you know, good Christmas gift for someone. Car kit, jumper cables and, you know, just something and putting out there.
Also, speaking of that, people should keep in mind, we're getting into the colder months, so for the people that don't usually have a jacket or don't like jackets, you should have one in your car just in case if you break down. Cause it's gonna get cold really quick in that car, um, when it's not running, so make sure you have a jacket. Should have your snow brush.
Yep.
Probably a small shovel that you have in there, possibly a blanket, wool blanket to keep in there. Flashlight, jumper cables, things like that in the kit. And, um, you know, you could always get those, I noticed those, um, lights that are really good. Uh, they advertise them on TV, the little star lights, they're an LED light that spin. But you just put them out instead of using road flares, because road flares can be quite dangerous on the side of a road and those things you just put out, you can take them and shut them off and reuse them.
We use them at our, actually our traffic events and stuff. We have cones and stuff. We are very good.
Do you have any other recommendations for anything that people should keep in their car?
Covered flashlights, uh. The, um, extra, extra water gloves. No, water bottles.
Water.
Maybe a little bit of, uh, sand for traction, sandbag or something for weight. Make sure you have a, a phone or some type of communication.
Yeah.
Most people do have. Some cars even have that on.
Most people don't go anywhere without that now. Attached to them.
Keep your, uh, make sure everything, all the fluids and stuff in the vehicle are all ready to go. Windshield washer, windshield wipers, check good windshield wipers.
Tire pressure.
Tire pressure.
Tire pressure is important, most important thing about your tires. Have it recommended, you know, tire pressure can be found on the inside of your vehicle, on the door, the door frame. It will give you your recommended tire pressure, where you could actually look on the side of the tire and recommends the tire pressure for you also. Keep your tires properly inflated, so. Anything else, sir?
Um, and off the subject of car and safety stuff, our Town Alert app. Keep trying to promote that. Uh, you can go on the App Store and buy Town Alerts. Download it on your phone, look up Warren, uh, there's different, um, parts that are, for the alerts that you can, can sign up. There's sewer, the water, recently the West Warren water, we're working on that.
And then, any information's on the website, Mr. Williams, you know better about the Town Alert?
Yeah, so basically what we did is there were so many alerts from the, uh, West Warren district that we decided to make their own and Jimmy's taking care of that, so now, you know, people who don't live over there don't really need that alert about the water, so easy to go and say, yes, I want, or no, I don't want that notification.
You ever just go out to that sector of site?
So people living in West Warren should sign up for that, you know, click on it, so they get those notifications. I mean, you can sign up for all of them, doesn't matter, but it, it's, the purpose is to serve that sector only.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
Uh, that's pretty much it for now, I think. Until we get to the next little thing on your jetpack.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
I do. This might've been better for your boss, but he's gone. So the bridge, the railroad bridge, it's, so there, there was a repair done, but it's still wet all the time. Do you know what's going on?
Are you talking about the underpass?
Yeah, sorry, the underpass.
Yeah, yeah, um, that wasn't related to the, the main street, school street. Uh, but we do have, uh, there's just so much water in the ground this year. That underpass had a lot of drainage, um, and coming into it, different angles. They recently, in the last couple of weeks, have tried to clean, locate all that drainage and it's still continuing. But it does rain almost an inch or two a week here. Uh, so it's, there's just so much water. We are investigating it and, uh, we do salt it and sand it daily.
Yeah, when I was coming in today, well, tonight, they, I hit that little spot under the bridge and my tires spun a little bit going up that little spot.
Yes.
Cause you track up that water up on the side of it and it freezes, it's slippery. And it's hard because it's at an angle, so, you know, trying to sand it, it just, all that sand is just gonna run down to the bottom.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an ongoing.
Okay.
Investigative work.
So it's just, it's groundwater as opposed to something leaking?
Yes, it's, it's, it is.
Okay.
All groundwater.
You could add to the, to have heated pads, those little things, bags.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And warmers.
And warmers, yeah. Yeah.
There is a, there is a list of things that maybe we could make a little post on the website. Have the, a couple flyers that NEMA has and share them.
We have a section on the website for you.
Yeah, it's, it's under SERT, um, but you know, there's, there's a whole.
Well, you can change that to SERT slash emergency management too. And have like, you could have lists.
Yeah.
Create lists and just put little things in there.
Different for the different seasons, you know, some summer with their. And I encourage people to go on it, on this and, uh, the other thing with the nine-one-one system, re-sign up for that.
Yep.
They did, I don't know if the chief could get into that a little bit.
That's Rutland.
That you could kinda, the reverse nine-one-one.
Or make it smaller.
A little bit.
Is there a link on the website for that?
For what?
I don't pick up words.
Click on the red line on the top.
Oh. See where that goes. It's the SWIFT nine-one-one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the work stuff.
We, we, so we've recently, we've had some reverse, uh, nine-one-one calls go out for the special town, excuse me, yeah, the special town meeting happened in November. Uh, some members reported not getting them. So there is some sort of glitch in the system. We've been talking with Rutland, they're trying to, something happened when they switched from the previous system to the SWIFT system where not everything had, everything transferred over correctly. We're trying to figure this out and trying to see whether or not we have to have people re-sign up for it or if it's a merger issue that Rutland can handle on there. So we are in talks with them. Uh, the director over in Rutland is working on it. He, he put in an IT ticket for it, so currently there are IT people working on trying to resolve that issue. But, uh, hopefully that will come back online without having to have people re-sign up for the program. So we are, we are aware of it, we are working on it.
That's really good to know because I've had several people that are not even from Warren or anything else going, get me off of this.
I know that we were getting, we were getting, you know, um, like I get a phone call to the station, I get a phone call to my personal cell phone, but I stopped getting my personal cell phone calls and we're still getting the station calls. So somehow certain like people's cell phones didn't transfer over properly and that was identified recently. So we're, we are, we are working on that. Like I said, Rutland did, it's something they had to do on their end and they, they did put an IT ticket claim in for it.
Okay. Could you fix this page too? I mean, it says click on the following link in order to sign up, but then the link is actually way down here. I thought it had something to do with mental health services during COVID-nineteen.
Yeah, that's something that.
In fact, that would get rid of it.
You might.
Like, why is that even?
I, I could fix that, cause I gotta add some stuff on the website.
Okay.
You can just jot a note down, I have to fix.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll fix that, cause I, I gotta add on there, um, also for, um, reports of discrimination and things like that, because I have to add on there that I'm the, the person to contact if anybody has any reports of discrimination in any way. As far as with town employees. So we could put that in there. If there's any other thing that you guys have noticed, if, if there's anything else you guys noticed, you know, let us know and we'll get it fixed on the website. We don't catch everything, but we do try to keep up on it. Mrs. Dusty's really good with trying to keep up on this, fix things as she gets them. And I'll fix things too. Um, you know, we just fixed the school thing two weeks ago that it wasn't even going to the school when you clicked on the link. So now it does, so that's all set. But yeah, let us know and we'll fix the stuff. Anything else, sir?
I think that's it.
Okay. So moving on, good job by the way, and moving on. Discussion on creating a levy compliance slash safety committee, anticipated vote. And.
We have nothing on that?
Yeah, this is different. This is one of the things where it's, there's a lot of work going into the levy. We've all been attending the meetings and going to it and trying to help with the levy. There's a lot of follow-up to it, is maintenance that needs to be looked into, uh, who's gonna be establishing and doing the maintenance for the levy. As far as like exercising valves and things like that. So there's a lot to it. You know, something like this does need a team dedicated to it, of people that are interested in helping out and, you know, as far as members. You know, as far as members of the town, to make sure this stuff's going on. Because right now, we've been meeting with the Corps of Engineers for the inspections. The Selectmen have, along with Highway Department, Emergency Management, and all our other partners that have a part with the levy. Mr. Farrar has been out there for the inspections and is quite involved. So this is something I think we definitely need to do, that we can keep up on this. And we can't monitor everything all the time, but it'd be nice to have something like this. Who is bringing this forward, this one? Is that you?
Yeah.
So what do you have for us with it?
Well, basically, we'd like to set some type of team. Probably have a couple, maybe a member of Board of Selectmen, Administrator, Chiefs if they were at Highway. Someone, I was thinking of the, like the night, the guardman down at the facility there. Someone that knows some knowledge of the actual physical side of it. And other people that just maybe have an interest. Help out.
Yeah, right now, the gentleman over there, his name's Bill.
Yeah.
I don't know if people see him walking across the street, it's hard to miss him. He's a very big man, very tall. But he handles all that stuff in those buildings and watches the buildings. And I wouldn't want to meet him in a dark building in the middle of the night because it looks like somebody that could eat you. But he's a very nice man, very nice. And he knows all that stuff over there. He knows, he's a wealth of knowledge. He's multi-generational over there with the mill complex, his family. I think at one point, the family used to own it, his family, that he said? Or they were a part of it somehow? But, you know, he would be great to have on that team also. And I know he's expressed interest in helping out with it too. But yeah, this is something we definitely.
Kind of tying everything together little by little here, people's knowledge and stuff.
There's a lot that goes on with these issues, well, it brings in all the different partners too because you have parts that are highway related, some that are emergency management related, some that are fire related. Because if there's floods or a levy breach, then the Fire Department, the Police Department respond, you know. Start evacuating areas, or with CERT, talking about levy. And how that could be, we need to prepare for that. Yeah, and with us getting more and more forward with it now and moving forward with getting the maintenance done and taking care of it, making sure inspections are being done so we can get a better rating with the Corps of Engineers to prevent any like insurance issues later on. Because if there was a breach, we're not in compliance still. We're getting there, but we still need to do a lot of work. And there's a lot of maintenance with shrubbery and bushes and trees and stuff going around the levy system that need to be dealt with. And aging infrastructure over there, so. There's a lot, a lot to do. Joe? Yes, sir?
Could I suggest that you give Mr. McCann the, a copy of the 20-page report that I
Yeah.
Put in your office? Historical background, its significance.
Yeah, we can give him a copy of it. You know, and, you know, there is a lot there. Do you have anything else on recommendations for it?
No, just things like that, learning the history and people that want to get involved and.
Okay. So do we have people to even appoint to this? I mean, besides Jim?
Not so much more of, we're looking, we're starting this, we're looking. Creating a team.
Creating, yeah.
And, you know, we really have to have how many members, who are the members? Is it gonna be by a member or by position? Because you gotta look at people that are, are gonna be vested in this, emergency management. If something happens, you're gonna be there, okay? You're gonna direct your people around. You need to know where the people need to go if something happens. Fire, they need to know what's going on because when you have that wall of water going down and starts flooding people's houses and stuff, they need to know what they need to do. You know, I'm sure they already do, they have a plan, but, you know, fill in everybody else, what they're gonna be doing, what they're part of it. Same thing with police. Well, I'm gonna have to block off all these roads to make sure nobody drives down it. People don't want to go surfing on it with their wakeboards and, you know, things like that. You know, it's, it's gonna be a little bit, we gotta figure out who's gonna be members and, you know, part of us. Highway should be a part of it. Again, department heads for all those sections where typical emergency would happen, I think is pretty much where we'd have to go with that. Do you have any recommendations, Mr. Farrar?
You know, obviously, people, you know, from the community, Bill would be a key, key person to have on that. And, you know, obviously, police, fire, highway, CERT, you know, those are all key, key components to this. You know, the committee may, may ultimately, you know, make recommendations and they may bring those recommendations to the Selectmen for possible approval or adoption. You know, it may be recommending, recommending a committee that they would recommend these, you know, policies or compliance or to address these safety needs. And then, you know, the Selectmen, under that new fund that we were able to create, could, you know, fund those projects that the committee had recommended or identified as priority.
Do you have anything?
No, I think so. I think it's a good idea.
I think the sooner the better.
Yeah, yeah. So we'd have to look, you know, start drafting up a letter stating on who's gonna be in these positions. Are you guys, chiefs, are you guys good with being parts of these? You guys have a lot of responsibilities, but the levy's a big thing. We know how dangerous it could be if it's not.
I mean, it's certainly something that we can sit on and advise on. I mean, I, to be perfectly honest, I don't have a whole lot of working knowledge of how the levy system is. I mean, that's, well, prior to me being here, so I don't, I don't know a lot of the actual, you know, infrastructure and or engineering of it. But, you know, certainly dealing with the repercussions if something were to go wrong would be something we're both gonna be, you know, heavily vested in. But, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, sit and talk through those things. I mean, you know, I really need to probably have constant contact with the Army Corps of Engineers on this because, you know, certainly exercising valves is a scary, you know, that's something that concerns me, you know, without having.
Well, nobody's exercising any valves, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, that in itself is something that would concern me. Those valves haven't been touched for a long time and you'd create a much bigger problem by, by, by starting that than, than, you know. So I certainly, we would have to rely heavily on, on Army Corps of Engineers to make sure they weigh in on what truly needs to be done or what, you know, what shouldn't be done.
And that's one of the things we need to have, because we need to have an engineer go through there. And they need to inspect the valves and make sure that they're working water. Because none of us, and even the Army Corps of Engineers, recommended not doing anything, exercising anything. Because you might, one of them might end up failing by moving it, it hasn't been moved in 20 years. And that could cause a problem. And not flooding the town problem or anything like that. But it could be, it could cause water to move into the buildings there at the mill complex. Because the buildings at the mill complex, is it building seven? I don't remember, but the closest one to the, is it seven? That one actually is part of the levy system. The levy system actually goes underneath the building. And the controls are inside the basement of the building. And if you go in the basement of the building, part of the wall of the building in the basement is part of that levy system. So you have to go inside the building to exercise the valves to make sure if, my understanding, if the building's starting to flood, you would open up a valve, it would help flood, release the, the water back in. Or it would shut, you close the valve and it would shut the water off from coming into the building through the levy. So, but we're still trying to figure that out because even asking the Corps of Engineers, they're like, yeah, we aren't really positive about that. And that's why we need somebody professional to come in, look at it and identify how these things work. And if they're in good working condition, and how we exercise them. Because I think according to Corps of Engineers, we have to exercise them every six months or something? Every six months? So somebody has to go down there and open it and close it a few times and there you go. Another part of that is being able to block off if, if there's a breach or a failure in the lift gate. Is, there's logs over there, if anybody's been over there, there's a pallet of what looks like rotor ties. And that actually drops in there and blocks off any water from going through and it shuts the river off from, it's like a mechanical block if that gate fails. So knowing about that and how that is gonna be done. You know, there's a lot to it. But I don't think the Fire Department would be responsible, that it's more responding. And, you know, what needs to be done, how you would help. And with CERT, because right now, one of the part of the, one of the things in there is making sure that we have sandbags, you know, shovels, equipment. Did we get the, did we get the sand, did we get the sand, no, we didn't get the sand loader yet. Okay. Potentially some new equipment coming that could load sandbags for us. Because trying to load thousands of sandbags by hand, gonna be quite a task. Having a sandbagging machine would definitely be helpful and we might be getting one donated to us from somebody. Which would help a lot. So yeah, yeah, let's look into it, start. Yeah, we're gonna have to start identifying, you know, a letter and who's, who's gonna have what roles. Who the committee's gonna be made up of and, you know, go from there, like starting any other committee. But yeah, let's do it. I think people heard me talking enough about this once they were born.
Well, I think, I think you need to make a date because we've been talking about this for two years now. And talking and talking and talking, no, we need a deadline. This is the time that we're going to have a committee formed.
I think we gotta say who's interested.
Yeah.
A date.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think it has to really be done by position within the community. Because obviously, we're gonna need the Chiefs a part of it, you're gonna have to be a part of it, Jeremy's gonna have to be a part of it. Jim's gonna have to be a part of it. You know, who else?
Bill.
Bill. I know he expressed interest because they're, he's the, the night watch over there and the overall maintenance guy for the mill complex. He gets the keys to get us in those buildings, we need to have him. And we should probably have Bill's phone number too. You guys should have that number. I don't know if you got his number to call him?
I have, I have all the Washington numbers, yes.
All right. Because he's definitely, you know, if something happens, we're gonna get in there.
Well, I mean, could Jim come up with an outline of the committee and then we can review it? I mean, yeah.
You wanna do that?
My next meeting?
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
So you're looking for?
Your suggestions on who should be in this meeting?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah.
And that or like maybe the first meeting in January, you wanna do that?
Yeah, why don't we do the January?
January fourth.
Yeah. And I would say work with Mr. Farrar about it because he's very good with policy letters and setting up these things and he can help guide you with it too. And we can get that going because there is a line item now for the levy. And we'd like to start getting that stuff done. It's not a lot of money, twenty grand?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. We might not be able to do the cameras or anything like that. Hopefully we can, but we could also address the brush and one of those big concerns, the trees. But yeah, be good to have that.
And that's what this committee can kind of get the priorities and put it back to. And I don't know if FinCom wants to have a seat on there or anything.
Breakback out, resident. You're, you're doing the committee's work right now. Just thank you, Karen, for trying to move this forward. Jim's gonna propose, working with the Town Administrator, it's settled. The meeting's dragging with a lot of extraneous talk. Let's move along, please.
All right. So we have to hold Jim on that and we'll go from there. All right, thank you very much. All right, we're good. All right, moving on. So review and possibly vote to enter into an agreement between the Town and Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 22 and 23 for Massachusetts Community Development Fund Program Administration Services. Anticipated vote. So is this the same thing we vote on?
Every year.
Every year.
Yeah. So this, this document before you is the Management Services and the Support Services from CMRPC with the Town of Warren for the management and support of our CDBG program. Their administrative support and management of the program moving forward. And the costs and the breakdowns are attached.
Okay.
And all of this is paid for through the grant proceeds.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No, I, I say if it's, it's the same as last year and CMRPC has been really good for the town. So I'd say let's, I don't need to discuss it, I think just, it's good.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Farrar, you have anything to say?
Nope, nope.
All right. The motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the agreement between the Town and Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for the FY 2223 Massachusetts Community Development Fund Program Administration Services.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Velis, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Dufray, Mr. Farrar. Jim, that needs to be signed by Madeline?
Yep.
All right. Next item, discussion and possible vote to sign an updated Milltown Public Health Coalition Intermunicipal Agreement. Anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
So I believe the Board of Health is bringing this forward and I believe the lead town has changed. This was the same grant that the, that they brought before us, probably about six or seven months ago. And the lead town at the time was Palmer, now the lead town is the town. Uh, now the lead town is the town of Ludlow. So they needed, um, to sign a new agreement, um, with the, with the appropriate changes.
Has anything else changed besides the town?
I, I wasn't aware of anything else. I, I did speak to Jessica on her, um, on her, before she had exited. Um, and that's what she identified to me. Um, I didn't see anything else that signaled anything different?
Changed?
No.
Nothing else has changed.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
No questions?
Nothing else, Mr. Farrar?
Nope.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the Milltown's Public Health Coalition Agreement.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Velis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, next thing, discussion on temporary, temporarily allowing Leslie Cook to cover office hours for the Board of Health and to possibly set compensation at a step minimum on grade A-one pay scale. Anticipated vote. Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, as we had discussed at, at previous meetings, um, it was the, the town's goal to try to, um, get some public office hours made available while one of our staff persons, um, is out on a temporary basis. Um, we feel as though that we could get this accomplished, um, although very limited hours, but to have off hours, uh, at least an hour available a day for the public to come in there, um, uh, to get any, um, applications or to submit stuff um, or to have messages, uh, returned, um, would be helpful. Um, we, we've come up with a plan to address this Monday through Wednesday from three to four. Um, and to have somebody that's currently, um, working, uh, in the town clerk's office who came forward to volunteer, uh, to help us out. Um, Leslie Cook, um, uh, looking for some additional hours and, and to help us out, um, I think is a good thing. Um, and, um, if we can make this happen, um, she would be, uh, you know, be starting at the minimum, uh, within that, within that pay rate, which would be twenty-two, thirty-one an hour.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good with it.
Any questions, sir?
Same as Rick.
Rich?
Rich. It's my accent.
Motion?
All right, so I'll make a motion to, um, have Leslie Cook fill in in the Board of Health at the, uh, grade A-one pay scale, uh, minimum step of twenty-two, thirty-one an hour.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Velis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, continued discussion on setting budget guidelines for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five for all departments, anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as we discussed at our last meeting, I did send out an email, uh, to all departments. Um, the majority of the departments did respond, some did not. Um, so the responses to the email was to, um, you know, the email that was sent out was to get a gauge, uh, so that the select board can have an understanding of where departments are looking, um, you know, for FY twenty-five. Um, you know, we did receive, uh, response back, uh, from Conservation, uh, from Fire, um, from Warren Library, uh, West Warren Library, the town clerk's office, the treasurer's office, um, school district, um, police. Um, and I did have a conversation, uh, with, um, the Board of Assessors. Um, although they're, they, they haven't responded to the email, um, they will be responding on Monday. Um, and, and their thoughts are that they're going to be looking to, um, you know, have somewhat of an increase in their overall budget. Uh, they're not sure exactly how much of a percentage increase. Um, they may also be looking to do, um, some upgrades into, uh, some of the software as well um, to identify, um, the state mandates of tracking, um, excise tax for, um, for boats. Um, so, um, there may be, um, uh, some modifications within their budget to address those, those needs. But overall, uh, it would appear that there's some, some, some priorities that are clearly expressed by, um, uh, some departments, uh, whether it be staffing or, um, or supplies. Um, you know, there's, there's, it's very clear that, um, that departments are, are, are coming back and, and, and looking and starting to think about, um, you know, some of their, you know, budgetary items and some of their goals for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, you know, the, 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 um, the, the, the Board may wanna consider, um, you know, with obviously, you know, potential increases, um, you know, um, a level services budget does also include increases, um, you know. It allows for increases, adjustments for, for, uh, costs that are on the rise. Um, we, we've talked about, um, and, you know, it's my plan to get a, a capital budget approved and, and looked at and, and passed this year. So some of these items that have been mentioned in some of these, uh, requests, uh, you know, may be part of that capital improvement, uh, plan, uh, which would focus in, uh, into the budget. Um, and, um, you know, there may be, uh, you know, some opportunities there to address some of the needs of some of the departments, um, within that. Staffing is obviously something a little different, um, that would be looked at, you know, within the operating budget of the, of the whole. Um, but, um, you know, um, it's still, uh, it's still a very unpredictable, uh, economy right now. Uh, way, um, interest rates are, um, it's very unpredictable. Um, and, you know, the state revenue is, you know, some of their, some of their revenue has, has slowed down a little bit. Um, so, um, you know, those are all indicators of, 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 you know, some words of caution when budgeting.
So a lot of departments identified things and stuff, so. Don't you already have a sergeant position on the department?
We had it, but I don't have.
But nobody ever took it away?
No.
But he's got no money for it, right?
Right.
Right, but nobody took that position away. So you just gotta fund it, right? You know, we don't have to create a position or anything, it's there. You know, it seems like everybody's, you know, some, some departments are good with one, some are looking for specific things that are gonna add to their budget. And some are looking for in excess of three percent, three and a half percent. You know, it's always a tough one. I think level funding, level services, uh, gives the ability, um, for us to cover everything, um, still maintain everything with the, I'd say the caveat to, if they have special requirements, to address them to the Board. So if you needed an additional position and it's because of mandated requirements or whatever, you know, that's understandable. That's gonna increase your budget. But, um, you know, it's, it's case by case because you can't compare the fire department to a library because they're different. What are your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I would do level services. I think, um, something we really need to address, and this is brought up by the last letter from Conservation, is we really need to look into leasing computers, I think. It's great to buy a computer and let it sit here for ten years, but I've seen that Conservation computer and it's a piece of crap. And we should really be sort of cycling them out. So people have good machines to look at. I mean, if you have to wait twenty minutes for a computer to boot up or to print, there's no productive time. And somebody like Corinne already just works a few hours, handful of hours a week. So if half of her time is waiting for the computer to do something, it just doesn't make any sense. So being able to cycle computers out, you know, and, and we don't have to worry about disposing them either, you know.
But you have to, yeah, pull a hard drive.
I mean, but, but you don't, you're not, you know, the system unit doesn't sit around in, you know, the records room or something. You just give it back to the leasing company and get a new one. And I think that's really the way to go. I think it's worked well with the copiers, right?
So we'll look into the new IT. Maybe that could be something, too.
Part of their, yeah. Part of their agreement usually, you know, a lot of these IT providers, they like to also have the option to, to either sell or lease, um, you know, computer equipment um, as part of their agreement. You know, the current agreement, uh, with Northeast IT, you know, they, they, they are your provider. So if you needed a new computer right now on the spot, you would go through them. They don't lease, um, but, you know, you would buy it and it would be at a discounted, you know, rate than somebody else. Um, so, you know, as we look, you know, at potentially somebody, another provider, um, maybe they lease.
Yeah.
And they do refurbished computers, too.
They do refurbished as well, you know.
But then, if you get a refurbished, like if it's a couple of years old and now you keep it for ten years, you know, you know what I mean? Like it just, you're already behind the ball. We may be able to talk to the company that leases the, uh, the printers to us, too. They do computer leasing.
Usually, um, from what I did, some very limited research, computers have come down quite a bit. You know, copiers are still expensive pieces of equipment. Um, you know, you're talking, you know, maybe a copier's, you know, six or seven thousand dollars and, you know, you know, you can get a decent computer now for, you know, eight or nine hundred bucks. Um, so.
You gotta look at, well, is it gonna be cost effective to lease? Or is it just cheaper to every, every five years, we have the building, you know, say? Well, they should be, they should honestly be budgeting them, you know, for something like expenses, like, um, if you're gonna buy like paper and pens and stuff. Well, we also need a new computer this year, too, so we're gonna have to add that to our budget.
That would be fine if people do it. I mean, the, the thing about leasing is it just, it sort of forces you, okay, it's five years old, it's out the door. You're giving me one.
Right, but if it costs us more money to lease them?
Well, it, it may. I mean, that leasing is generally, you know, or, or at least leasing, you're always paying, right? But, you know, I mean, we were dealing with twenty-year-old copiers. I don't know, what if Adam had one, right, that ate like ninety percent of the paper that you put into?
Yeah, we weren't friends.
Yeah, that's so.
Bob Marley wasn't one of them.
Why are we keeping that around? And it's sort of that inertia of, well, you know, we don't have to buy it.
I don't wanna spend my budget money on that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, you know, we got this list from Northeast IT. Ninety percent of the computers, Northeast IT is recommending that we get rid of them. Cause they can't update them, they can't upgrade them.
Right, and that's another thing, is you wanna be on at least Windows ten, if not eleven. You don't want seven.
Four. We have some that are on four.
Windows ninety, there wasn't a four.
There's no four.
No four.
Ninety-five, maybe?
Ninety-five, maybe.
Yikes, I mean, that's, that's a cyber risk.
Yeah.
Yeah, ninety-seven, I think.
No, there's ninety-five.
And ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Anyway, they're old.
Yeah. So that's a cyber risk. I mean, those, there's no more patches, those computers could be, you know.
Conservation's one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can look into when we look at doing our IT, doing a lease, if, what they would do for leasing or purchasing a computer. What's gonna cost us less? Because it might cost us, because honestly, a good test, desktop, you can get for five, six hundred dollars now. They're, they're not expensive, you know? Laptops are still a little more expensive, but desktops, nobody, nobody has them anymore. You know, so they're selling pretty cheap.
Yeah, actually, computers are coming down, too. They did go up and now they're coming back down. So it would be a good time to start switching some of these out.
Definitely, and, and an old computer will be slow by default. Any, any, any old technology, you see, the, the way they program thing is, after a certain time, they don't support it. So the unit also becomes very slow because there's no
Updates.
Updates, yeah. So it's very slow. I agree with David. Um, some of the PCs where we don't have to replace the, uh, the monitor, it would be a good idea to have a new box at, at a lower price.
We are getting cold.
I'm very curious about the leasing.
Yeah.
Because
Thank you!
As, as, as new technology comes, sometimes it's cheap. So the computers fail very quickly, very ea, very often. So they go bad. It's not like the old days where they would do something very hard. Now they're very, you know, um...
Lowest bidder.
Yes. So I, I would, I would like to just look at the options that we have, like lease or buying, you know, new boxes for, for, you know, see what, what works best.
That, and so an advantage to leasing is like these copiers. If one of these copiers goes south, we get a new copier. I mean, we're, we're in a contract to have a copier, so.
Did you get yours?
If we leased computers, it would be the same thing, you know, if it goes, crashes and, you know. Now we're not stuck with a bad machine that we have to buy a new one. We just turn it in and say, hey, give us a new one.
See, the school uses.
It'd be nice if you can look into, so, if you can just look into what it's gonna be for both. Give us a comparison and say, Northeast IT will, we sell computers. I know they don't, but what it's gonna cost versus a new computer with updated software would cost us this much to purchase. And how long that computer's gonna last? Is it gonna last us the next four years before we have to upgrade it again? You know? And we can debate that, but we can get a number.
School uses the Chromebooks, which are cheaper. And it seems to work fine with these students and what do they do? They do it for homework. They do documents, they do email.
Yeah, that might wor, I, you know, so I don't know that that's gonna run Vadar, though, so they're, well, that's web-based, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, so we'd have to look in to make sure that, um, that's, cause Chromebooks aren't gonna run anything on Microsoft.
Oh, yeah, they do.
They do?
Woo!
Okay.
They do now.
All right.
They figured that out, that they weren't, they weren't, they weren't selling enough.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, that's an option, too.
Look into it.
Yeah.
I know a lot of places do like to go to the laptops because, again, if somebody has to work from home, you just take it off the station and bring it home.
We don't have a policy for that.
Mm-mm.
We can. We can. We can! Everybody's giving me dirty looks on that one.
I, I agree with you, sir. We can do a policy.
With as will, there's a way. You know?
If you break it, you pay for it.
But there's some departments that do like to, if something happened, an emergency happened or anything, we can jump on. So. But, um, yeah, we'll see what's best.
Are we thinking like level service, level service, right?
I, I'm thinking so with the caveat that... I, I'm thinking so with the caveat that if anybody has special needs, let us know and we can address it case by case.
Okay.
You know, every department's gonna be a little different, so.
They can provide the justification for it.
Right, yeah, like we did last year. And it worked out very well. I think, did it?
I think so.
Yeah, nobody was complaining.
Everybody got paid, right?
Right?
Yeah.
It passed.
It passed?
Yeah.
Right. What do you think, sir?
I'm good with it as long as every board really comes here and makes their point.
Oh yeah.
You know, because sometimes I feel like they are afraid of saying, yeah, we need all this. Might as well open it up and say, we really, really need this, you know, and and tell us right away instead of suffering the whole year. I mean, there's no shame to say, hey, we need this, this and that, you know, whatever we discuss here and we end up, okay, you can get this, but you cannot get this. Because of, and we explain it here, you know, give the, the boards the opportunity to come and.
Make their case, right?
Tell us, yeah, what you, what you need, like the school said, necessities.
Yeah.
I like that. Necessities, not fluff. All right, okay, so let's do. Level services and.
With necessities. Level service with necessities.
Well, level services with, with the ability, if they have special needs, to to bring them to the Board of Selectment. To review.
Okay.
Let's do it. Motion.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Richi Haker, aye.
Derek Venes.
Aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. So level services. All right, sir. Warrants and bills.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll for senior abatement check of two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars. Payroll number twenty-six, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Vendor number twenty-eight, eighty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Haker, aye.
Derek Venes, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Right, bills.
Uh, we'll make a motion to pay the following bills, uh, with the exception of number one in virus signs. Um, so Comcast Business, hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents, Crystal Rock, twenty-one sixteen, Verizon, thirteen eighty-five. Vanpool, forty-one hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents, and MIA endorsement, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Haker, aye.
Derek Venes, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Now, what's going with the virus signs?
So that is a, um, that was a reimbursement grant that I didn't get to give Karen the information for thirty percent of the. Should, should be coming from the matching account for, for the Board of Selectment. So we pay seventy, I mean, the state will pay seventy, we pay thirty.
Okay.
So I took it off so I could do it properly.
Okay, very good, all right. All right, minutes?
No.
No minutes. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple items that I'd like to report on to the board this week. We are really excited. We, we finished all of our paperwork for our EDA Rights Mills Master Recovery Plan. The contracts have been countersigned with Weston and Sampson. We are tentatively scheduled for a kickoff of the grant in early January. I will get you the date hopefully by next meeting. And, you know, at that kickoff, we would, you know, like to get some participation from, from different members of the community. P, uh, officials in the community, planning board members, highway department surveyor, water sewer. You know, locals that are familiar with the area around Rights Mills, possibly Bill as well. These will all be key in helping Weston and Sampson identify some of the. The critical needs and the infrastructure around that facility and into that particular section of town. So we're, we're excited. It's gonna, it's gonna happen, uh, the, the beginning of January. I'll get the date and time of the kickoff. And the, and the, the vendor is well aware that the project has to be completed by June, no later than June fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. So that's very good that we're moving forward. I did reach out to Entree Technologies, which is another IT provider. This week, Entree Technologies is on the state's bid list for IT services. We have a tentative meeting set up for January tenth at ten, at nine in the morning. They're gonna come. They're gonna look at what we have, you know, for inventory. They're gonna look at our, our setup here. All in the hopes of trying to establish a quote for, for services, for, for providing IT support. In monitoring services to see what their program's about. If a member of the Board of Selectment would like to be participating in the meeting, you certainly can.
One of you guys wanna attend? One of you guys should be there. You guys are like.
Yeah, give me a heads up.
Uh, the tenth at nine.
You wanna do it?
Yeah, I would.
That's what I said, give me a heads up.
Yeah, I, I'm available. If you wanna take it, go ahead. Either way, one of us can, one of us.
One of us will be here.
Okay, very good.
We'll duke it out.
So we have, we have that. We are, I met with the, the sewer commissioners this week. They had a meeting at ten on Monday. Ralph is back. Our chief operator is back as of this past Monday. He is currently now reviewing the applicants that we have for, you know, the operator mechanic position that is open. We are still accepting resumes and cover letters that's posted on the town's website. He's reviewing the current applicants and seeing if there's anybody that, you know, we could potentially offer up some interviews. I think there's a few candidates that he was looking at to seeing if, if we could get some interviews started soon. The town accountant's position went live today. So it's on the town's website, it's on Indeed, it's on MMA website. That's on, posted in our bulletin board inside here. It will be running in the Ware River News. The Quay Bog Current in the Palmer Journal next Thursday. And then it will run on January fourth edition after the holidays. Resumes and cover letters are due back no later than January sixteenth. I did have a chance to look at some quotes and, and with two electricians for lighting issues. On the exterior of the, the building here at the Shepherd Center, Shepherd Center Municipal Building. We have two quotes here from two different contractors and for the, for the same scope of work. This would do two surface mounted LED lights illuminating over the main entrance doors. One cabinet LED lighting illuminated the public notice board. Replace an LED wall fixture that's by the flag pole for the flag, to shine on the flag. Troubleshoot and repair outside light as needed on the southwest side of the building. There's a, there's one of those lights that's out. I don't know if it needs a new cell, if it needs a whole new replacement. And install one commercial grade LED illuminant, uh, solar light for the, for the roadside, for the entrance sign to the Shepherd Building. And the lowest quote was three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
For the work. We do have funds available from special that we could, you know, move forward if the board wants to move forward with that.
And what would, what kind of cabinet light are they? Is it just putting it over that overhang to just light up the, the signboard?
Okay.
Yeah, needs to get done. We need to fix those lights out there. And, you know, we, it's hard to read those postings, especially during the winter, you know, people can't see them. You know, so what do you think?
I would just say make sure that the light goes directly into the sign and not. To, you know, drivers or anything else, not directly.
The, the, the light right out here?
Yeah.
The sign, yeah. The sign.
So I was similar. I was gonna say for the posting board, if the lights go straight down, you're not gonna be able to see everything. So they've gotta be out and shine in, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If they go straight down.
Like a forty-five degree.
Yeah, you'll probably light the bottom of it, but the top, you may not be able to see.
Purpose is illuminate the board.
Yeah, yeah, make sure it's to illuminate, not like the ground or anything. It is for the board.
Did you mention the flag?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a replacement.
Yeah, to have the light shine directly on the flag.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause right now it's very small.
Yeah.
It's shines on the base, not actually on the flag. It's supposed to be illuminating the flag.
Yep.
If we're gonna have it up all twenty-four seven.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, I mean, i- if you wanna just, you know, if, if you're comfortable with, with what I've, you know, in my report, then you can just instruct me to move forward. Just don't need to.
Have him move forward.
Yeah, move forward. Move forward. Tell him to move forward.
Keep moving forward.
All right, you good with that, Mr. Lees?
Yes, sir.
I'm good with lighting.
Yeah.
Today I participated in an, a, a MIA virtual training on, on some new. Workers' compensation laws that are gonna be coming out. That will also get us credit towards our MIA premiums. So I, I did that today. Last week I met with a, a citizen who had brought something neat to the discussion that we were having. She had indicated that she observed another community, neighboring community. Develop a citizens' leadership academy. And in the citizens' leadership academy, it was basically a, an open house of how each department would run in, in, in your town. Government, I gave it to you.
It's right here.
Oh, yeah, I gave it to you.
It would, it would showcase how each department would run in, in your, in your town hall. So, you know, you, you know, you would have representatives from the treasurer's office, the collector's office, the assessor's office, the clerk's office. Board of Health and so on and so forth. And they would have different sections where if we had the public. Sign up to participate in this academy, where maybe one night it would be the, the financial. Aspect of, of the, of the organization, or it may be, you know, individual nights. But it was over the course of ten weeks, that particular program. And it can be, you know, a program can be adopted in, in, you know, in, in, in our community. And it could be modified to, to make our needs, you know, of, you know, to our, to fit our needs. It doesn't necessarily have to be ten weeks. But I thought it was a very well thought out idea and program. As a matter of fact, I, you know, prior to us having this conversation with this resident. I had mentioned something to the police chief about possibly doing a citizens' police academy again. I know in the past that, that they've done something like that, or a national night out. You know, those are typically done in the, in the summer months in August, where they would have public safety officials. You know, do a, an event, an awareness event. So the, these are similar things to get outreach, and I think the purpose of our conversation was to try to entice people to get interested. And to participate more in, in town government. And so that, you know, the board may wanna look, this, that is an example of, of a program that's run in Al- or Charlton or?
Auburn.
Auburn. That, that we could model or, 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 you know, create here in Warren. If you, if you thought that, you know, it may spur some participation.
So the resident, which she, she said we could outer on this one, is, is Mrs. Deborah Hardy. And super nice woman, great resident. She brought this to our attention and because we've been having problems getting interested. People interested in joining some boards and departments and trying to get people into it. And people are just seem to not, we're not getting a lot of people in, into the local government. So this is something that Auburn has done and each, each week they have a meeting. And one week they touch on an hour with, say, the police department. And the police chief talks about what the police department does, what their responsibilities are, may show them a cruise or whatever. Or whatever, gives a presentation on it and some feedback from them. Next week, you know, the fire department might have one. And then you go to like the assessors. They would talk about what they do in their department, FinCom. They would discuss, hey, this is what we do for FinCom and explain that. So people that really don't know how communities run will get like a little crash course on each one of them. So you might actually get people saying, you know something, I think I could really help them out. I'm, I'm more interested in that and get into it. Cause a lot of people seem to, well, I, I know nothing about that and. If I'm, I'm not gonna touch it if it's not broken, you know, whatever. They don't wanna get involved because you just don't know. This gets engaged, gets people engaged into the community. So I'd like to know a little bit, like, you know, what's your thoughts?
It sounds like a good idea. I think it's gotta be outreach and publicity. Cause if people don't know, they won't come, but you gotta hit, like, do a postcard or, I mean, you know. I don't know how you get people, Facebook maybe, but, you know, you want, you gotta advertise and repeat it and let people know this is happening. And so there's these different sort of seminars or, you know, classes.
So when Ms. Hardy brought this up to us, we thought, yeah, it's a great idea. But who are we gonna get to run it? So we kinda put her on the spot. And said, thank you for doing this and we greatly appreciate the information. But do you wanna coordinate it? And she actually agreed to that. She said she would step up and coordinate it and get it going. And if it's something we wanted to do and. You know, it's another way of getting, fire department's having great success with their, their fire academy at the school. This is another way, you know, try to get people to hopefully replace us someday. You know, I'm sure, you know, Ray, Ray would like some people in FinCom and multiple other boards, CERT team. It could help get members with CERT. Same thing with Board of Health. Joe would give a presentation on what Board of Health is responsible for in the community, what they do, so. They have animal control in there, all the different departments.
All the departments, yeah.
So what do you think?
I think Rich, I said Rich, it's right on spot.
It's Rick.
No, no, don't, don't. See, he's right on spot. He needs a lot of promotions because if we don't offer food at these events, nobody will show up. We have to, we have to think about a anchor, you know, somehow, like a, call it like a fair.
So I think we need to look at, is it something we'd like to do in our community? And then we could look at, well, we do, need to do an outreach for this then, if it's something we think it's good.
Definitely it's, I'm a hundred percent on board of this, but it's gonna need a lot of work. Marketing and trying to find out a way to have people show up. Because in a small town like this, my joke about food, it may come reality.
Yeah. I mean, the reason we're gonna have this is cause people don't participate. So how do you get them to participate in something?
Yeah.
That's gonna help them participate when they don't participate.
Well, you, you put it out there again. You put it out there every way you can and it's like crash course. Introduction in, introduction into FinCom, introduction into planning board and, you know.
We have Mass Appeal Pizza show up and say, we're gonna have pizza there.
Yeah, we might be able to get sponsors.
Yeah.
You know, Mass Appeal, Georges.
Yeah.
You know.
It's not a bad idea.
I wouldn't have any of the liquor places sponsor. I wouldn't have any of the liquor places sponsor, because, you know, might get people showing up for wrong reasons. Uh, chiefs, what do you guys think about this?
I'd like to see whoever you have over there.
Come on up.
I can take it.
I, I, I think it's a great idea, I think that, generally speaking, you guys know that we're there to show up to everything. I just would also caution that we've also been volun- I don't say volunteer, but we've talked about at least two or three other committees that we're gonna be asked to sit on here already tonight alone. So, I just, all I'm gonna say is that I'm all for helping out, but if, there needs to be a give and take here. I mean, people can know about the town by coming to meetings like this, and they can know about finance by asking those questions. So, my only ask is if we're gonna go down this road, that we, it needs to be fair for the people that are gonna be asked to be there and, and sit up there and explain this over, you know, because again, we're, I know collectively we're all being very spread thin here. Um, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, Jimmy's decorated every night, he's on every board committee, we're on every, every, we're being asked.
Same seven people.
This could help Jimmy out by getting people over there.
I'm not trying to be negative about it, I'm just trying to say, he's right, it's the same seven people that are doing odd all, all the time. And if people truly wanted to be involved, there is more than enough ways for them to be involved. So, I'm not, I will be happy to sit and be, and come up and, and talk to a group, but at the end of the day, if no one ever come, you know, I just, I just don't wanna see the same people, you know, just say, look, I can't, I can't do this anymore, you know what I mean, that's, that's my only thing about it. I think people, you know, if they truly wanted to be involved in town, I think that there, there's more than enough advertising, there's more than enough conversation at these meetings to at least get the ball rolling, to have them say, okay, let me, let me see what I do. I mean, they all know we have an open door policy, people can come in and talk to us anytime about that stuff too. So, I'm more than happy to do it, it's just that, like I said, tonight alone, we've talked about two or three different things that we're gonna be asked to sit on, on, and this is the third, you know what I mean? So, that's all I'm saying, I just, it, it's just from a personal standpoint, you know, I just, you know, I, I'd love to see people step up, but they, they really gotta just, they gotta own it. They gotta, if they're gonna say to do it, they gotta do it, I mean, the rest of us are doing it, so.
I think, you know, I, I agree with your point, but I think, you know, you could probably have a couple firefighters come in and explain what you do. I don't think it necessarily has to be a chief, but.
I, I don't, I, I guess what I'm taking from this is I think they're looking for more of what are the concerns of the fire department, the budgeting process, what are those? And, and I'm not so sure they're, they're looking to a couple firefighters to tell them that we put out fires, you know what I mean? I mean, you know, I think they're looking for more of an inside look into our budget and, and whatever our capital needs are, and how these, how these things are planned for, and that kinda. I mean, I think that would be more valuable for them than anything, I mean, certainly, like an open house or something, yeah, this is the equipment we have, this is what we use it for, you know.
Well, that, that's basically what that would be.
Yeah.
Is, is just, and you're right, you could have a firefighter do it, you know, one of your lieutenants or whoever, and it's an hour, and whatever it's quarterly, every, you know, or we decide to run it twice a year, or something like that, or whatever it is, it's an hour.
Oh, no, like I said, I, I, I was under the impression it was more they were looking for the, how the town is truly working inside. I, I, I didn't think they were looking for.
No, it's, how's your, how's your department, what do you do?
Well, like I said.
Yeah, what do you do as a firefighter?
Yeah, I'm more than willing to, to, to do that, I think, I speak for Jerry and Jim and everybody, but, yep. Uh, but, you know, um, you know, like I said, there, there are some aspects that maybe, you know, I, I'd have to go over like budgetary stuff that, you know, and that kinda stuff with them, so they'd understand how that process works, and, and how we run, and, you know, that kinda, that kinda deal. But, you know, I think we'd be more than willing to help out as, 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 as we normally do.
I, I think with that, you'd have the freedom of your curriculum, because it'd be up to you to sit there and say, or whoever, um, this is, this is what the fire department's about. We can't explain your department, because we don't work there.
Oh, no, I understand.
You know, um, you know, Joe or somebody would be explaining Board of Health, this is what we do in Board of Health, and it's a crash course, it's, so people know.
Overview.
Yeah, people know what's going on within the community, so if they're interested, they might be interested in joining one of these boards that we're really short on, and it would give them the information to say, you know, something, I, I could probably help out with that, doesn't seem something bad, it's not scary, you know? There's no boogeyman hiding in a closet or anything like that, it's just management.
So, what about making, uh, like, segments of each department, like in ten, fifteen minutes, what they do? Put it out on a platform, people on a rainy day, the leisure can look at what Board of Health does, what police do, what fire do. And that's just, you know, the department's making the video, it's there, it's out.
Like a video?
Yeah.
I see that with some towns, some towns actually have that on their website, and you can click on the website, and intro to Fire Department, One Fire, or intro to CERT. And you, you do a little video, and you show the equipment and stuff, and this is what we do, and it's like a little presentation, that's a good idea too. I like that too.
Yeah, that's, I would, if, um, Ms. Hardy was gonna do this, maybe that would be something she would consider is, to maybe do a ser- a series of videos. At least that could get people interested, and then maybe do the in-person kinda thing, like more of a classroom, you know?
Interesting.
Something to think about though, it's a good idea.
I've been, I've been talking with Mr. Salvador, and he's a teacher at the high school, and we've been trying to coordinate to have in next year, have the kids in, in the civil class, they wanna kinda like walk over here. One of us will talk to them and, and, you know, say what we do, and what kinda things, they wanna walk over here, and like pretend they're doing a meeting here, and sit down over here, something like that. So, there's something that they've been trying to do for a while, and maybe this next year, they do it, but it's, it's like that, it's introducing, you know, the kids on what we do here.
Very good. So, I think something like this would be beneficial, maybe we can start with videos, and, you know, maybe put them on our website.
You know, it, it could be something like have, have, have a kid, you know, interview each one of them, and we have small interviews and just post them, like, oh, what do you do? What's your position, what do you do here, you know, something like that, I don't know. We could talk about it for a long time, and, you know, come up with good ideas, but I do think it needs a lot of marketing, it may need food at the end, or, you know, something like, like a videos, like, you know, he was saying, but that, that, that's, that's a hard work, you gotta work.
Yeah.
It's a tough thing.
It's a lot. Right, did you guys have anything else to add?
No, no, I think this was, I mean, it looks good, I totally understand the concept of it, you know, I just, we just need to come up with a way to, to, to put it out there, you know?
And I, I do like, you know, I don't know if we could work with you, and maybe do like little videos of each department, maybe we could set up something each day?
Well, maybe we could do it with cable too.
Yeah, yeah, or high school, other high school students are in like a media class or something.
Yeah. Maybe I'll reach to them. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's make something happen.
Alright.
Alright, when are we meeting this lady? Um, well, when you wanna meet with her?
We're here every Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, we could probably ask if Ms. Hardy wants to come in and talk about it.
I could reach out to her.
Reach out to her and see if she wants to talk, we could put this as, as an agenda item, and we could talk about maybe videos on the website, or how that would work with that, and how often it would be done, we couldn't do it all the time, because you're not gonna get a lot of people if you run it monthly. But if you run it like maybe twice a year. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, probably be good, but I think we definitely should be doing something, because we get declining activity within our communities. People just aren't, nobody wants to join planning board, or concentration, all these other departments, so. Right? Cool?
Okay.
Just more research.
Okay, when, when does the board, when should I ask her to come to a meeting, or, any, any particular?
We'll find out when she has availability, but if she can make it to one of our regular meetings, that's fine.
Okay.
Next like month or two, right, I mean, something.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna be able to do anything with this and the next, you know, with the holiday season.
We'll do it in January.
Winter coming in.
It's not January eleventh.
Not January eleventh, yeah. Okay. So, well, also continuing on with my report, um, working with the assistant town accountant, uh, in the transition period, uh, has been going very smoothly. Um, and, um, you know, just continuing on, um, with, um, where our accountant had left off, um, and, um, in just picking up payroll, obviously, and, and vendor warrants. Um, as I mentioned before previously, Board of Health Office, uh, we, we do have that staff from three to four, Monday through Wednesday. So, if, if, if residents or anybody wants, has a, has a need, um, there will be a, um, a staff person in there to get messages, to relay back to the board, um, and to take, you know, applications and, and payment, um, for, um, for applications. Uh, it is my goal, uh, also in the month of January, um, to bring back the open meeting law, it's training, uh, but now for, um, employees. Um, I know we had a, a Saturday for, um, you know, for boards, commissions, you know, residents that may have interest, uh, in the, understanding the open meeting law. Now, this would be, uh, for, um, for actual employees, so we're gonna try to work out a day, I'm gonna work with Karen to, uh, logistically come up with, um, a day in which, where we can, um, you know, set up, um, some trainings in, in-house, um, to go over the video, um, for, um, for, for actual staff. Um, along with that, um, we are also going to be in a, uh, we're gonna be sending it out, um, the updated, uh, personnel bylaw. I, it did get modified, um, in, um, at the special, uh, so we'll get that, um, those changes made, um, and sent out, uh, to everybody starting in January. I wanna make sure everybody gets a copy, signs off on the personnel bylaws, everybody understands them, um, and gets a copy, and we'll keep a copy of the sign-off sheet, um, in the, um, in the personnel jacket as well. So, everybody knows we're starting off the new year with, uh, the personnel bylaw and stuff, so.
Okay. Okay, can I ask you?
Um, no, I think that's, uh, that's about it.
Okay, um, uh, where are we with A training for, uh, customer service training?
Customer service training, I, I gotta look into exactly where we can get, um, find somebody, I wanna find the right person. I, I put out some, uh, some feelers into some other communities, nobody's done specific customer service training, they've done sexual harassment training, they've done discrimination training. I really wanna get the right, the right, the right person to do that, so I'm, I'm putting out some feelers, I'll, I'll have something within the next month.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And you're all set then, and Joe's?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
You have any question?
Um, you asked me to take a look at the tablet at the sewer, I went there today, but they were closed.
Okay.
And I guess I, I tried to be there yesterday, but it was too early.
Uh-huh.
Today, I, I think I was around three forty, and.
Yeah, they close at three.
Oh, they close at three, okay, so, okay, so I have to go there before three.
Yeah, seven, they're open, seven to three.
Oh, they're open at seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I can go earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alright.
Um, moving on, new business, anybody have any new business?
No.
Nope.
No, okay, um, old business?
Ritz group?
Uh, we're still waiting on electrical, um, so, um, it's, it's installed, it's just, you, you know, some of the connections have to be hooked up.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any old business?
Nope.
Good. Um, correspondence, we had, uh, observation from Mr. Joseph Condrat. Um, concerns are the water levels are getting very high in some of our rivers and brooks and ponds. Yes, it is, that is mother nature, and they're gonna get high, and, um, the beavers are being addressed, as we can all see, if you drive through Sturbridge, Sturbridge had a beaver breach, and it's going across Route twenty. Um, and it's icy, they actually put out a message to everybody be cautious, because there's nothing they can do about it, to be careful, because it flooded, so.
Where was this?
If you're, you go past the state police barracks, if you're coming back and you're going west from like the Walmart there, if you get off the pike, when you get off the pike, it's like right there.
Yeah, that pond or whatever.
Yeah, there's, there's a little wetland that's there, well, apparently there's a beaver dam in there, and they, they said in their statement, um, or their post on Facebook, that it was due to a, a beaver, and it's flooding, and they're working to address it, but use caution, because it's gonna be wet for a while. So, um, but that's happening everywhere, and we're trying to address the beaver issue, and Jeremy Olson's working on that too. Um, but there's not much we can do about the water, just hopefully it recedes a little bit.
Fortunately, uh, since I wrote that to you, uh, the river's gone down about a foot, so the next two days, in the fifties, it'll probably go lower.
Very good. Yeah, tomorrow's supposed to be like fifty degrees, so that'll probably help out.
The one problem that I did see.
Yeah.
The one problem I did see, is the brook that comes from Cummins Pond down to, uh, the culvert that goes under the underpass. Uh, there are a lot of logs in it, and I really don't know how to.
Where are the logs?
Uh, they're across the, the brook, you know, there's like, if, if you were to stand on the bridge that goes from the gate to the beach and look down, you'll see three or four sets of logs on the, in the brook.
That's water department, right?
Uh.
Is this at the Cummins Pond Dam?
It, it's not above the spillway, it's below. And.
Yeah, it's water department, isn't it?
Not, not necessarily, because, uh, Pine Grove Cemetery is along that brook for about six hundred feet. And that's technically town property.
I'll have to take a look at that, see, see whose property is.
It's multiple people's properties that that goes to.
If it's on private property, there's nothing we can do about it, but if it's on town property, we can address it, it's water department, they need to address it.
Yeah.
But we just don't want any of that back up, if it's causing damming.
Well, the thing is, if the logs are at the point where it's saturated and they break, they could be pushed downstream.
But then it ends up downstream and causes a problem downstream.
At, at the culvert.
So, you never wanna push anything downstream, because it just goes down a few, goes down a quarter mile and jams up there.
Yeah, it'll jam up the culvert, and then you got a bigger problem.
Okay.
Alright, we're supposed to get four inches of rain the beginning of the week.
Awesome.
Just looking at the forecast.
We need it.
And then maybe a little snow.
I don't wanna hear anybody talk about how we're in a drought.
Yeah, there's no drought yet.
There's no drought in Warren.
The water table is extremely high, that's why like the underpass.
Yeah, okay.
There's just, there's so much water in the ground.
Yeah.
There's water coming out of the ground that normally never, where it has never been before. It's just one of those things we just gotta kinda adapt to.
I mean, as part of the Board of Health.
It's nature.
As part of the Board of Health, I have to look around at situations that might potentially exist in the near future.
Okay, well, thank you very much for doing that, Mr. Condrat, and we'll keep an eye on it, and, you know, maybe we can do some maintenance, you know, highway or whatever, if it's on our town property, of course, their task too, so, we'll look at it. If you see anything that's on town property that could be a potential hazard or be an issue, definitely let Jeremy Olson know. Send him an email or something, let him know that you should take a look at that.
Well, it would probably be the tough brook up, uh, on South Street, because it sometimes gets right up to the level of the road.
Yeah, well, there's a few places like that too, is, um, yeah. Alright, you have anything else to add, Mr. Condrat?
Not to that.
Okay, do you guys have any questions? Okay, and then, next thing we have is a correspondence from Mr. Jeff Tripp about tiger marks in the dirt. And that's apparently crossed from his house. Um, this is nothing that.
That's for the eight, from the eighteen wheeler.
What eighteen wheeler?
There's an eighteen wheeler that parks in his neighborhood with the, with the box on it, um, and his concerns were, um, you know, of having a, a vehicle that size, uh, in a, in a very thickly settled residential neighborhood, um, and, you know, some of the damage. And, you know, some of the damage that it does to, to some of town property and potentially could have an impact on other things, trying to maneuver that vehicle in and outside of the, that neighborhood. He did also send along a video as well showing, you know, the truck. It is quite a large. I did coordinate with the chief and Jeremy on that.
Nothing we can do right now about it. Breaking any laws?
He's just parking a truck, I mean.
There's a small strip of grass between, uh, let's say cross, the sidewalk.
Yep.
In the road. And when he goes down there, he drove over it once or twice. So I let Jeremy know, Jeremy looked at it, he didn't see the.
The road's already cracking up in the areas and, you know, the grass is. You know, I know that's in front of his house, right? Yeah, that's right in front of Mr. Tripp's house.
Yep.
There's not much you can do. Guy's not breaking any laws. What are your thoughts? Is he doing anything wrong?
Well, I mean, you know, it's kind of unusual to have an eighteen wheeler with a box, you know, in a very narrow and thickly settled residential neighborhood, in my opinion. You know, it could pose, you know, safety issues with, you know, if they were to take down, you know, a telephone pole. You know, the truck is trying, in one of the videos, the truck is, you know, trying to back up, you know, and pull into a driveway. I mean, you know, I don't know if there's, you know, children around. I mean, those, it's a massive truck. I mean, I could understand maybe if it didn't have a box, if it was just the chassis. But this has got the complete box. I've never really seen something like this in a residential neighborhood, but.
Is this every day?
I'm not sure if it's every day. It was reported to me on the twelfth of December, so I could ask him to, you know, if it's every day or if it's, you know, once a week.
Normally, I talk to him once a week.
Once a week.
Did you talk to the operator at all?
One of my guys, it's the second time he called. And asked him if there's somewhere he can drop the box or go a different route.
I can't imagine taking those turns in those, that very tight neighborhood.
To be honest, that's why they have insurance. He hits something, that's his insurance.
Yeah, if he takes out a telephone pole.
Yeah, he's gotta pay for it. But we can't tell somebody not to use a public way.
I think.
Do we have, we don't have any bylaws on it?
No, no, I think Mr. Tripp was looking for, you know, if the board, you know, maybe wanna consider something, you know, in the future for addressing things like this.
Like a bylaw?
Like a commercial vehicle, you know.
Some towns have it, but it's, we're a rural town. There's commercial vehicles on every street, any of each parking, you drive.
Well, I mean eighteen wheelers.
Well, his best bet may be to call the company. I mean, this, this person driving a truck, I mean, it's not, is it a hook to a distribution company or something? That he could call?
I think it was a.
File a complaint?
Was it a private-owned truck or?
No, it's a company. I think it had a company's name, Ego or Ego or something.
Call the company, right? And say, look, you know.
I do have his video if you want. I can email it to you and you can, if you wanna play it.
Yeah, email it to us. I'm curious.
Play it. He sent us the video. Might as well watch some TV tonight. Doesn't look like we're getting out of here before ten o'clock anyways, so.
Rich, make sure you.
If you guys wanna go home, it's late. You guys have been here for a while.
Ray is.
Ray's cold. He's about to bust out his Snuggie.
All right, who's ordering pizza?
Grinders. Don't get me started. I'll order it.
I know, everybody's talking food lately. We went from rum cakes to grinders and pizza and.
Oh, I know where there's a rum cake.
I know where there's a rum cake too.
We should break into that thing.
Everybody keeps asking if they could have a piece and I go, not mine.
He has by the end of the meeting to take it out of that office before it disappears.
I don't think the attachment's got attached here, Rich. I'm gonna send it to you now. Here you go.
Make sure you play it so they could see it on TV.
Yeah, who's gonna share the screen?
All right, so these, where is, which one is the video? These are just photos?
Is that not the video?
These are just photos.
Yeah, we don't have those ones. We just have the damage.
Okay, that wasn't.
That's a tight fit. It's a pretty good driver if he can get right in there.
I mean, there's your phone number, just call this company and say, you know.
I would recommend, yeah. Tell Jeff to call the company.
Yeah.
Don't miss the trip.
Yeah.
But the guy's parked in his driveway.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't matter if it's tight or not, if he can get in there, then.
It's his driveway, right?
Yeah.
It's his property.
Okay, I think I sent the video, I don't know if you, if it came up, yeah. I think it's in those, attached via those files right there.
Is that midnight?
Twelve thirty-one AM.
Yeah, that was another of his concern was the noise.
Next time I walk over there, I'm gonna wave.
Well, he came up.
Email you sent, this isn't the right time. That's not the actual.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Yeah, that's Liberty Street where he's going in.
I mean, if he got stuck and he blocked a public way and an ambulance was trying to get down, I mean, you know, those are the things that, you know.
I don't, he didn't go on any grass.
Uh, there's another video that, that may show some of that.
I mean, you can, well, I don't know, did he there or was that from before?
You got somebody backing it up? Looks like a kid though, right?
Oh, maybe that's where it's parking.
Is one of your trucks?
No.
Is that what you're gonna do?
No, 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 I'd know it.
Okay, so he swings in and backs, right, into his parking spot.
So his house must be right across from them.
I'm just gonna like.
Just let it play.
Yeah, you can see on the other side, it goes on, right on top of the sidewalk.
Right here.
Yeah.
So if he is destroying the sidewalk and driving up on the sidewalk, then we'd have a concern because, you know, at that point, it's gonna be a problem. We can't be affording to buy new sidewalks because somebody's driving over him with an eighteen wheeler.
Look, there's the dog pooping in the. We caught him.
So I don't know if there's, I think there's another video there too, Rich. Another, there's another one. Shows it from a different angle, I think.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those houses.
All right, I don't know, but this one is very helpful, right?
Shows a good down road.
I mean, I can't imagine, I mean, if we had like, you know, five or six inches of snow, I can't imagine that truck being able to maneuver that within there, I mean.
He probably wouldn't even try.
Well, it looks like he's a long haul trucker. Cause he got a bed in there and everything.
That's gotta sleeper, so, I mean, if I have a regional truck and he's gone all week or over the road, they're gone twenty-one days and typically it's, you're gone twenty-one and back for nine and then you're out twenty-one again.
He's probably stopping home and this probably isn't an everyday occurrence, you know. If I know.
Do we have any bylaws for sidewalks in town? In some, in some roads, we have sidewalks and some others we don't.
I think they have to be, remain cleared.
You have to, yeah.
Yeah.
You can't park on them, you can't, you have to.
Well, somebody just parked on the brand-new one that they just put out here.
Well, I would've moved my car, but like, you're keeping us in this meeting forever.
It's ten o'clock now. Yeah. Get some more information, see how often they're here and, you know, if he's damaging the sidewalks or something. Maybe, maybe we can contact him and say, hey, your truck's damaging the sidewalks.
You want what?
Put the first video ones.
Oh, you're done?
Truck giving one company in the trip, like our trucks, we run for other companies and we use their trailers. So you got our truck with our logo and then somebody else on the trailer. But it should have, there should be on the driver's side the DOT number and you can look, company that owns the truck right by that DOT number.
Yeah, I think that's what he should do, is just call the company and say, you know.
Yeah.
Be the best bet.
Yeah.
Cause they're not breaking any laws and we don't have any bylaws saying that he can't park in his driveway. You know, maybe it's something we should address and, but is it really that big of a problem?
I think it will become a problem if there's some damage to property.
Well, that's the thing, we gotta look at, did he damage the sidewalks doing it?
If it's town property, it's one thing, but if it's his own property, we can't do anything about it. You could complain to the trucking company.
And that's up to, miss the trip. You know, we're not gonna call companies and say, hey, don't park on this.
It's not even his property, it's outside his property.
Right.
Yeah.
But if he wants to call the company, he can call the company.
Yeah, can call it.
Yeah. All right, I think we spent way too much time on this. Have a good night, guys. So moving on, correspondence from Sylvia Buck. Dropped off a sample letter for support of Southmore Cemetery.
You'll find the first part of this tooth page is what points need to be mentioned in the letter. And then she proceeded to do a letter.
Yeah, I'm good with it. Yeah.
I'll sign it.
You have any questions?
No, I would just, again, you know, state that the town doesn't really own the cemetery, but.
Yeah, and she made a very good point about that. She says, we don't ever claim that we own it. We just say that we have been doing all of this work to it. So she says, if you're good with it, let her know. And she'll send it out.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I'm good too.
Preserve our history, but we have to do the due diligence too. Make sure, see if we own it. We might, if we don't own it, we don't own it. She might wanna preserve something that's somebody else's property. Yeah, if you just print it up on letterhead and all that, get that set inside. Well, we'll do a, our next meeting, have it ready and have it on the agenda for a vote. Comments and concerns? Any comments and concerns?
I'll make one quick comment. January eighteenth, which is a Thursday, Jim and I are, I don't know what your plan is, but Jim and I are booked for the MMA.
MMA conference, yeah.
So we won't be here. So I know we're like already scheduling things into January, so we gotta block that one off.
Yeah, no January eighteenth.
No meeting. So like Ms. Hardy, maybe the end of.
Why do they schedule them in January?
I, cause, like, nothing's going on, I guess.
And that's the point, it's right after the holiday, it's right, it's going into Boston and it's most likely gonna be snowy.
Yeah, but would you wanna do it in June when it's nice out? Stay in a hotel for two days?
I wouldn't be sitting in a hotel for two days at the conference, that's for sure. Not in Boston. You know, but at least you can go out and do stuff.
Yeah, but you're supposed to attend the seminars, so.
You attend the seminars and you go out and have fun, like any other seminars that people do. Just don't know how to seminar.
Apparently not.
Me and Derek are gonna go to a seminar in San Antonio or something.
I know that one very good in Hawaii.
They?
Well, you guys have a great time then.
Hawaii. I don't, I think that would pass town meetings, sponsoring us to seminar in Hawaii.
Oh, yeah.
Volcano safety seminar from Warren.
And you're gonna bring back your wife a grass skirt.
No, she'd kill me if I ever tried going Hawaii without her.
That's why you bring her the grass skirt.
Yeah. All right, comments and concerns?
Nothing, sir.
Anybody in the public have comments and concerns? You're done for the day?
Just a quick, I don't know if it's a, I guess it's a comment, I don't really need a answer, but just, are you keeping the possibility for the Zoom subscription to be put under the town instead of conservation or?
Oh, yeah.
That be followed up with? And also, there was an unpaid bill that we had some questions about a couple of months ago in preparation for a town meeting. It was gonna be a warrant, an article on the warrant and just that's being followed up with, so.
We're gonna get into that too.
Yeah, just a reminder to.
Did you get anything more from them from that?
I have not, I have not heard. I've left them.
I have not, I have not heard, I've left them a message, I haven't heard back from them yet.
All right. Yeah, we'll look more into that and we do have to switch the subscription over to the town.
So, we can pay for one year and we get a discount? And what we could do is just switch, you know, I'll put it on my card for now, we pay it for a year and then.
Reimburse you?
Yeah, reimburse me and then we can figure out what to do with it after that.
Sure.
Okay. But it'll take, if we do it one year at a time, it'll be just easier to handle.
Yeah, what was that?
You saved quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
That's what I did.
All right, cool.
All right.
Correspondents, go ahead, sir.
So with the Parks, uh, like the ninth event coming up this weekend, uh, tomorrow from five to eight, people can come up to the second door over here and get the maps. And there's gonna be Santa and Mrs. Claus there too and some park, park department refreshments. So that'd be going on just Friday and then the, uh, contest goes on for the weekend. And then, um, on December twenty-first, the police department is doing the pickup of the Jingle Fun toys out back. So there'll be some activity, there'll be two dates.
Yes, next Thursday?
Yeah.
Between five and nine?
Five and nine, yeah.
Is the light map online?
Um, I, I think it can be found digitally.
I have, I have not put it on, she did not give it to me. So I don't know if she.
Or, yeah, once it's given out, it's, um, yeah. Are they charging for it? I don't believe so. No?
It's not that, it's not like the, it's not like the state, the, uh, town sale, how do you call that, when they sell the, uh?
Tag sale?
Tag sale.
Yeah.
That, that one they charge and they give it to you like that, but this one, I mean, I don't too like that.
Right, yeah, okay. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
That's all. Thank you very much, anybody else? Anybody, well, there's nobody on.
Nobody on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom, everybody's sleeping.
All right.
I have no coercit, well. Yes, I do. Talk to distract me.
Say, for next meeting?
Yeah, if I can't think of it, it's not that important. All right. So no more comments and concerns, uh, next meeting is December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three at six PM. And that should be a regular meeting and there should be nothing ahead of it or anything else, so we should be good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Richard Harker, aye.
Did you agree now?
Derek Bell is aye.
You're all adjourned.